Okay, if you may, yeah, buddy, we're gonna call the meeting to Carter and I'm gonna ask Laurie to be called, please. Stu Boyd, here. Denise Chapman, here. Amy Dorrin, here. Don Kirk, here. Barbara Cruz, here. Alex Edelweser, here. Nancy Romelf, here. Thank you, Laurie. That's what you had seen, so you fly this one together. My pleasure.
To the back of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, liberation, our demand, and this up with the routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Auntie. And we're just to see if I'm right, of course. The agenda, I think, is this color about the agenda, just actually, um, the night's birthday meeting, so, um, I've already changed the agenda for today's person. Here we stand, I might as much as to adopt the agenda.
So will.
Make soon. Thank you, Doc. Stu, and. All right, Laurie, just color up. Thank you. There is Stu Boyd.
Aight.
Denise Chapman.
Aight.
Amy Dorrin.
Aight.
Don Kirk.
Hi.
Barbara Cruz.
Hi.
Alex Edelweser.
Hi.
Nancy Romelf.
Aight.
Here, Rosie. Stand it for her, look. And I will turn this right over to that. What do I go to?
Um, we are going to have Theo Robison introduce us. Uh, school for the student.
Thank you.
We're all over the road.
Assistant, right?
Yeah, that's it. I'll find him to stay back.
Greetings, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board on Theo Robison Executive Director Secondary Education Thompson School District. I'd like to honor that their black heroes, we are Carville Any Day P Q Academy, Conrad Ball, like to share more about our school members that.
Thank you. I'll head up that direction so everybody's not looking at the neck. Yep, let's touch your name. Right. Good evening, Dr. Schaefer, Madam President, members of the board. Thanks for joining us today in our brand new building. We're excited to host everyone. Any opportunity we can get to have everybody come join us and experience the new building is really exciting. So. What we have, um, for you tonight, talk, we want to talk to you a little bit about, um, community building in our, in our new school. So as you all know, um, Peak View Academy at Conrad Ball opened as a product of a consolidation of, uh, three schools and an early childhood center. Um, and what we've been working on this year is really, how do we build a strong community? Building a strong community is what our, um, stakeholders asked for when we started developing the plan of consolidation. Uh, our kids really want to know they belong to someplace safe, someplace special, and someplace that they feel ownership in. So what we have for you tonight are some presentations from a variety of different age of learners from Peak View. And I'm gonna give you just a little bit of background as to what we're gonna talk about. So, um, we have almost six hundred and twenty students EC through eighth grade. So we have the smallest and the tallest in our building from three to thirteen, and some a little bit younger and some a little bit older. But what we're really proud of is the fact that we've been able to come together under one roof, many different languages, many different cultural backgrounds and experiences. It's a very unique building in the Thompson School District, so we're very proud of that. Um, quick, quickly, I'll go through these, these slides here, so, um. It may or may not show you the pictures. This is a, a nice visual trip down memory lane. So you can see some of the trenches that were being dug in the middle of the building all the way until opening day. So it gives you a nice feel for where we've come, um, how far we've come and where we are today. Um.
Where it was.
Done. Um, and our vision for our school, we were clear that we wanted to align with the vision for the district. But all through the formation of the vision, the mission and our guiding principles, and it'll go through to slide six on the. The view. It was clear that we needed to continue to build community. We wanted to make sure everyone felt like they belonged. These guiding principles are what direct our work every single day. It's what helps us to make decisions. It's what helps us to ensure that we're on the right track. We call them our guide rails or our grails, keeps us on the right path. So what we needed to do was find a way in our daily, um, activities that would keep us on track towards our vision. Um, we created what's called the Peak View Vision for High Quality Instruction. It has five different components. Um, and the foundation is culture of learning. So the culture of learning has been what we've been focusing on this year, and we do several different things throughout our day that ensure that we have a strong culture of learning. Everything from providing professional development, giving support to the staff, to ensuring that students have special opportunities that, that, um, helps them to feel connected. So what we will talk about today is what that looks like for culture of learning. One primary element is our community block. Every student in our building gets to participate in what we call a community block, and that's a block of time, about thirty minutes every single day. Students in elementary eat their breakfast during that time. They share a meal together, and then they engage in lessons that are geared towards the needs of the, the classroom community. So it could look like, uh, team building. It could look like problem solving. It could look like, um, developing skills on how to cooperate and share with one another. How to collaborate with one another, ensure that they're, um, giving everybody the opportunity to speak, and everybody has the opportunity to share their thinking. Uh, we do use a particular program. We use Character Strong kindergarten through, uh, eighth grade, so that's a time where that lesson comes in. Protecting that time means that we can still have protected academic time as well. So we're getting, um, all of the, uh, necessary components and not having to sacrifice one for the other. So during this time, um, we came up with some do's and don'ts. What do we do during community time and what don't we do during community time? As a way for adults to be clear and kids to be clear as well about what that time looks like. Um, we are a PBIS school, and so we're also teaching the components of CLINE, which is our PBIS acronym. And then it's a time for our elementary kids to have a little bit of a soft start so that they're not getting the ground running first thing. They get an opportunity to get warmed up. Middle level learners also have a community block, and theirs occurs later on in the day after lunch. We felt like lunchtime was a time where they could just be kids and let their hair down, but then they come back in from lunchtime and they needed some opportunity to get themselves also set to start learning. So they do much of the same activities during that time, including Character Strong instruction. So, um, also very unique is that we've been able to develop a web leader program with our current eighth graders. And what they are doing is helping to support building community across the middle level. So they're focused specifically on building a web or building a bridge for sixth graders coming into the middle level to get them into becoming middle level learners. They have a specific class during community time where they're devising, um, opportunities across the, for the school to participate in. To build community for all of our kids, but they're specifically focused on our sixth graders. So that's been a really neat thing to see, eighth graders mentoring and partnering with sixth graders. And they don't just work with sixth graders. They sometimes work with some of our elementary friends too, which is the bonus of being in a K eight. But their time occurs during community block, so they get the benefit of having it scheduled in the day. It's not an after-school program where you have to try to make it back after school after a long day, or parents have to organize transportation. We felt like it was something that needed to have dedicated time. So what you're gonna hear, who you're gonna hear from today are our first graders. Our first grade team and some of our friends are gonna come and talk about what they learned and what they did during their community block, and then we'll have our web leaders. Thank you.
You might feel a bit nervous. So thank you for having us. I'm Lacey Lee Snow.
And I'm Angie Schlebach.
You're the same.
And I'm like, eh.
Very loud, this dead.
And we're super excited to be here to showcase some of the great things that we are doing in our classroom. We got these guys to come and voice their opinion about it, but. It's our social emotional, um, curriculum that we do every morning and like Ms. Black said, like we, we do keep it very secret. We have breakfast. We have really great conversations with each other. And today it was really fun. We were asking them, you know, like, what are some of your favorite things? So would you like to share with them what some of your favorite things are? Every month, we have a special, um, word or character trait that we're working on, so we work on the character trait throughout the month. Record, what was your favorite one?
Uh, or it's honesty.
And what does it mean to be honest?
E-onest and. Are the true, uh, are the truthful without words said, right?
And that's really important, right? What did you say, Rose?
Gratitude.
Gratitude.
Understanding. Blessing for the bits of those feeling.
And was that gratitude or empathy? I gave you the wrong one.
But he gave you the definition.
That's right. Which one was yours, Delilah?
Said, I wouldn't have.
Oh, that. Okay, so here we go, empathy, sorry. And then there's gratitude. I'm sorry, Delilah. Um, you wanna explain what empathy is? I'll, I'll let you do it, Sims.
It's okay. Is Embracing Respecting That We Do.
So we do like all of these character traits that we're working so hard on every month, like it has been so great. Not only does this curriculum have songs that we're singing every day, but thank you, we have games that we're playing, and we have really great conversations that are happening in our classrooms. Based around all of these different character, um, traits. Yeah.
Um, one of the things that I really like about it, cause sometimes when you try to teach a first grader, what is empathy, or what does it mean to have responsibility? Um, one thing that comes along with it is some pictures. So we display it up on the TV, and first we just get a wonder and notice. And so they have a minute just to look at the picture, decide what do you wonder about what's going on, or what do you notice about what's going on? And then they have a chance to share with a partner, and then we share out and have conversations about what is the girl doing? What do you see? Have you ever seen that before? Um, and once we do that, then we have a connection to, well, how can you have it do this in your own life? If someone, if you're shopping and you see someone that can't reach the top shelf, or if they drop something on the floor and, and you're closer to it, what could you do to show responsibility? And so we have lots of connections and, and just great meaningful conversations about how we can do it here at school and then how we can, to extend it out.
But I think that's really the best part about this is they'll see a picture and they're like, oh my gosh, I've done that before in a store, or, oh wow, I helped my brother do that, or my sister. And so just to like have those conversations that we're having at school, they're just so meaningful, and this ten really is a great ten that we do have. So we asked them if they would like to sing and dance for you because we do a lot of that, and, um, we were a little shy on that. We do.
If you're in the building, um, between ten, or sorry, eight twenty and eight thirty, day forty, if you ever wanna come by, we definitely enjoy the songs.
Enjoy the songs and the, the games and the practice. Do you have anything else to share about Character Strong? What else do we do with Character Strong that you really enjoy? After we talk and we sing and we do all the things, what do you always ask to do? Play a game. And in the curriculum, they have a lot of games to choose from, so we have, we definitely have some favorite games, but. Do you have a favorite thing, Rex?
No.
What about you, Delilah?
Cats.
You like cats? Oh, cats.
Oh, okay.
We have lots of conversations about cats. Thank you for having us. Yeah, thank you very much.
Hi folks. Um, my name is Kate Barrows. I am a sixth grade ELA teacher here at Peak View. I also am the web coordinator. So like Ms. Black mentioned, we are a program that is specifically designed for supporting our sixth graders to our transition to middle school. Um, with me I have Aiden, Addison and Esme, three of our web leaders who are also student athletes, so just keep in mind that we came from track practice. We're here, we're doing it. Um, we also had another representative who couldn't be here tonight, so I'm gonna read what she wanted you to know about being a web leader. Um, so according to Natalie, a web leader is someone you can look up to, basically a role model for the sixth grade and all students in PVA. A web leader is kind, respectful, and someone you can trust, someone who can stand up to the people who aren't always kind, and someone who might be doing the wrong thing. I like being a web leader because it feels good to have people look up to you.
Right, sounds like it. What it looks like to be a leader at PVA is when you are being a role model for everyone, especially the elementary kids, because they're always trying to look up to someone. And that's important when being a leader, and also making sure everyone's was included and safe at PVA. The first thing we did for the sixth graders was the bleacher takeover to include and expose them to middle school sport events. Then we did the friendship bracelets to show the sixth graders that they are seen at our school. Next, to create appreciation for them being to class one time, we gave the sixth graders a soda with no tart. Thank you.
Another thing we're doing is to gather up. We are celebrating sixth graders being there, and so they can show welcome. The gatherup is an event we are doing here for the sixth graders on fucking New Year's. They can go to different levels to do different types of things, just like Legos, Oregon, Caribbean, Aquino, most, SpongeBob, Mario Kart, Hunger. Being my classmates, I have this.
One of the things I'm really proud of these guys, excuse me, for is they're owning it. This is their deal. So on Monday, I said, soon the quarter, what are we gonna do? And they brainstormed and planned, and I'm super excited to see them execute their final amount of the year.
Oh, right. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a snippet of what we have going on in our building, um, all with the attention and, with really strong attention around building community. As a new school, a consolidated school, we're starting from fresh, um, from a fresh playing field, and we want everybody to feel like they belong, and that's the intention of all of this, so. Is there any questions I can answer for anyone? Well, thank you for allowing us to present to you, and welcome. Glad you're here.
Thanks to the Zornos for bringing.
Yeah.
All right, we're seeing, I know the sake of this. That, uh, can do the, and to our. Such an items for our other countries, which, um, when our first, um, item is.
Sure.
Two point one, and there's, um, the head start, you mean, uh, unity, so.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Schaefer, Melissa Schneider, Chief Academic Officer. Tonight we present to you a summary of our Head Start assessment, which you probably heard about. I know that Aaron Lamb, our director of, for the childhood. Has been presenting to you a lot about Head Start, but in this assessment, we take a deep look at the demographics and the needs of the community, and then we have those synthesized and we bring them to you. So without further ado, Lamb.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Schaefer, members of the board. I'm Lamb Carroll, Director of the L O H Childhood Program. And thank you for allowing me to come share our annual community assessment update. Um, so our strike twenty twenty-five connection, it really is tied to understand the needs of our community because we're like, till we can support our families, we have a profound impact on their school readiness. Um, and the tide to that is that we want our families to feel welcome to our program, especially since we tend to be the first, uh, interaction with the school district. So we can build that capacity, then they're qualified to be more involved with their child's schooling through that time. And then finally, uh, focus area three is that to make this all happen, we really need to hire and retain a workforce that is of high quality and provide those high quality services to our kids. So the assessment really is that it paints a, provides a context and paints a picture that describes the needs of our families, and then also there's a historical piece that comes with it. So I won't read this list to you, but you can kind of, you can see all the areas that the community assessment touches. But for us in particular, we look at the health and social service needs as well as housing and homeless status. So the good thing is this is just some of the strengths that we have in our community, but it was neat to find out that we're the twelfth healthiest community in Colorado, which is pretty awesome. Um, we have resources to address a lot of things for our families that include food, housing, clothing. Um, a really important strength of our program is our community partnerships, especially with the, with Kids Back and the housing area, we services. We assess them frequently, and we can actually, uh, direct our families to those other resources, like the family center, uh, the, the health clinic and so on. And then finally, um, one of the things that you might have noticed in the report is in terms of education of our parents, a lot of them have a higher education than some of our peers do. And that's directly to the, so if you're in the community. So as we looked at our recommendations, um, we're still, uh, we're entering our second year of universal preschool. So one of the things that we're really focused on is we have a good start, and we want to make sure that the transition and client for the program we made smooth, especially for our, to our families. So we're gonna continue working on that piece. Um, what continually comes up in recommendation number two is providing mental health support with both our. Providing the services in the classroom as well as providing it to families, so it's more, uh, continuing to connect our families with those resources. And then finally, was recommendation number three, uh, we are focused on recruiting and, uh, providing, uh, high quality training for those staff so they want to stay in our program. So we are on a good place right now, and I hope to continue that because our goal is to expand the program and offer more, uh, opportunities for youngers in the Thompson School District. So questions? I know that's, uh, for sixty-five pages with the report.
We like, yeah.
And six slides.
Just shows how amazing you are.
I, I need to give kudos to my team. We worked very hard on putting this together.
Oh, Lamb. Um, teachers all have the masters.
Lowest have their master's degrees, or, uh, there's a brief period of time when UNC offered a undergraduate EC, ECSC program. So there's two that have that, but the rest of them either have their masters or they're working towards attaining mixed skills.
Is that the same call district, sir, that discussed?
Uh, we're one of the unique districts that come.
Grace and talent.
I just, it's not really a question. I'm sorry, I meant, I, I thought you were pointing your hand, no, I didn't, I, I tam. So I need you to just, do you have a question or a comment? Pop it out.
I was gonna say, I still, I know I said this before, but I really like the idea of the way that we're connecting the social emotional and the other resource training with the parents because that. Starting at that end, I think it just helps the parent, I mean, kids stop coming from them, so I just think that's really a good news to our educational. We missed again, Ted, they can. Try. Oh, tender. No, thank you. Um, just about the supporting staff with mental health, and if you thought about who you guys are gonna partner with, or what that's going to look like.
Yeah, so we're gonna bring back Dr. Barbara Sorrell to do some training again this coming, so it's a, an ongoing sustained piece that we want to continue. Then in terms of that, we're working with some of those, connect families with more source, resources to access a thingy.
Not a question, but a comment. When I read the sixty-five page report, I was, uh, appreciative of not only how complete it was. Um, and all encompassing, but how written, well-written it is, uh, well organized. Um, yeah, so I think it's a, a fine product that, that you and your staff have produced on behalf of our district.
Take care.
I appreciate that, um, you bought medicine, wound up the pink shirt, I'm upset. She had the white dog.
Talk to them. This one is bad, it's gross.
Yes. I can vote it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'll talk to you tomorrow. Uh, take four point two, the, uh, probationary licensed staff contracts, the licensed, secret strange.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Schaefer, Bill Seaver, Human Resources Officer. So what you have in front of you is basically each year the board of education required by law to formally approve the renewal of contracts for returning probationary licensed employees. So, so we have two type of employees in license, we have probationary and we have non-probationary. So probationary is the first three years of entering the profession, R O E, you would be probationary. On the first day of the fourth year, if you have three consecutive effective evaluations, then you would be deemed a non-probationary teacher. So according to the statute is probationary contracts are guaranteed one year. So the board, school boards need to approve the rollover of probationary contracts from like a P one to a P two, P two to P threes. And then P threes to non-probationary contracts. Non-probationary contracts are like rolling contracts. Like they're pretty much guaranteed every year, uh, depending on staff setting at the sun thing, it's things like that, but, but they're ongoing contracts.
I pray you need us to do, just, you know.
Just, just if you have any questions, because it would go to vote at the next meeting.
Okay. Start, I, I'm sorry, I laughed, it's an answer, yeah, question. Denise, go. Die. John, I said, that's gonna score, hey, yeah, learn, think it, age, stood.
Somebody. Probationary teachers can have. Great question.
Yeah, it's a lot. Pop this. Talk.
It's a good back to.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I was just curious, we're talking about a hundred and fifty, two hundred, just an ballpark bigger.
Yeah, we're talking about three hundred.
Sorry, I have one pocket.
So it, it's about a thousand licenses TE.
Okay.
So that kind of gives you that balance, but I'll double check my numbers, I guess we don't want to quote, left a missed number, but ballpark could be around that.
If I'm, if I were a F one, I'm probationary for the first year.
Correct.
And I'm, I, my position is a little bit naked, not being, is that right? Then if I'm hired back at a different store, am I P one again, or then am I?
Great question. You, you'd be a P two if the evaluation was effective.
Pumas. Nice.
Yeah.
And they're side. You go, this is the most time, right, this fifty?
Correct.
Right. Right, this is hard, right?
Um, give them a handout.
Sonic out. Uh, what point three is a superintendent evaluation and doctor, you're, stay right there. We brought ourselves back up. I was worried.
Get a lot of packets, look.
Yeah.
So I believe in January, we review the evaluation process, you know, as far as the workbook. So, so basically, uh, you know. Strike, strike twenty twenty-five is presentation will connect with number thirty, human talent, as we discuss the process of twenty-three, twenty-four superintendent evaluation work thing. So there's more policy, superintendent evaluation is one of the fundamentals, which is possibly the school board, the evaluation process keeps the T S D school board informed about the organizational activities. And the progress being made towards goals, and superintendent can use the feedback to engage in personal, professional development. So I'll, I'll fast track, like those are the board policies there. I'm not gonna read them to your, they're, they're having the site wise that we've done in the past. Uh, you know, there's eight different areas of the evaluation. You can see, according to strike twenty twenty-five, there are the four areas there. And then five through eight is a relationship with the board. So those are the eight areas that each board member would be evaluating a superintendent individually. So from the forms, basically number four is what, what I sent you last week, I sent everybody, like I shared the individual evaluation with you. I did that early for any questions tonight, but it's similar to the same form that we shared with you last year. Um, so, so there's a timeline of when that's due. So we'll fast forward a little bit. Um. So the timeline there is, the highlighted ones are per contract, so by November twentieth, goals and objectives conferences per contract, and that took place already. Uh, January twenty-ninth, mid-year review conference per contract, that was an executive session, and then review superintendent evaluation processes tonight. The homework assignment is due May thirteenth. So the documents shared with you, I'll, I'll check it May thirteenth or even before on the Friday to see where board members are at. And I'll send a nice reminder, uh, don't forget, you have the weekend, it's due on Monday. So if there's any support that you need, you know, to, connect with me, you can call me, send, send me an email and I can help you fill a form. Um, but basically what you'd be evaluating is. Is hu- highly effective, effective, partially effective, and ineffective in this, in all eight areas. So when you look at Form Four, basically, for example, like student achievement, that gives you the standard, and then the element is one point one, one point two, one point three. You rank it in highly effective as a four, effective three, partially effective two, and ineffective as one, and then documenting strengths and growths of each of the areas. So when that's due, uh, the Monday, what I'll do is I'll take all the information, compile it into one form, and then that will be shared and executed session. With all of you, with the metrics of what the overall rating is for the superintendent. If I can, uh, share, I'm in the process of sharing, um, a document for you, just highlighting, uh, what I should be. Growth as well as opportunities, so.
what I should be growth as well as opportunities. So I'll reflect on um the areas within the strategic plan, progress made towards all school achievement, accomplishments and those areas that I'm still working on. And I hope to have it in your hands like this slide. So I'm couple, you should have pointed it out.
And so you want us to write on here? Or you want us to do it on there?
Well, do do it on the Google form.
Okay.
Right, so then just type me there. If you have any issues with the form, uh, just give me a call. And and the other thing too is in the past, you know, board members have asked that like a three point five or four uh be calculated in any way you choose. And if I have any questions, I'll contact you and say, so can you tell me more about this or something that I can't understand, I'll find you all individual. Today's. But everybody did a great job last year. So kudos, first, we have to give kudos to the board last year. Uh, Denise, you have high expectations going in now.
Well, that's me the center.
But but things went extremely smooth last year.
Any questions for that?
Talk about that.
Okay.
So the last slide is just a discussion item. Uh, routine reconciliation, the superintendent's unused vacation days per contract and fringe benefits at the option of board. Accumulated vacation days may be paid prior to the end of the contract year, up to twenty days. So this is what has been taking place in the past. So it's similar to what the board has approved.
Do you have any question to follow it towards? I, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right. Top four is the declaration of surplus property to water shares.
Good evening, Mayor President, Board of Education, Dr. Schaefer, tough, honey, Chief Operating Officer. Uh, tonight for horse distribution, um, and hopeful outlook for our next board meeting is discussion around um excess water shares that we are looking at uh legally the surplus. So currently we uh use loud niche shares, which is basically a ditch on the northwest corner of the um district defeats and tenia, a little bit high, uh, Steenbury, and also a portion of the ninety-two acres that we are under contract to sell. Um, what we have found is that we don't need all that loud shares that we have, even with uh water usage that's projected even in a dry year. Uh, with this selling turf, we have excess shares, um, and without having ninety-two acres underneath, um, us, a lot of excess shares to put on our cap. So this process is to um tap the floor of a bonus surplus. So then staff can move forward with putting it on the market for uh for sale. It's, we're gonna have for is.
Questions for Todd? Please. Why's wait? Marching. Yeah. Tonight, I know. How many, let us see how many oh, two point five shares that are excess?
Yes.
I don't know that much about water. How much is a sha- share or is two plumbing?
You calculate it's two acre feet, um, which I don't have a
Acre feet.
Acre feet, so.
I mean, like for, yeah, okay.
I suppose, but there's like three numbers in my head and it's could be, yeah, some it's maybe could be per the the she, the share and it's per acre. So that might, we have excess because those, so yes, yeah. Here the turf.
Sure, I think that you.
I know you just said you had to, you don't know the ball breaking out. When we do sell, where does that money drop? Does it go in the envelope or where does it go?
It does. So it goes back to the capital expense. So yeah, the pie, the people.
Pay one, then it goes and then that's the account we can, the board can choose.
Just by a bond.
Yeah, for example, it's the, yeah, well, it was a first time E D upgraded this summer. Yeah, so it's for capital expenses.
And yes. All right, you deny that there is a one point five, which is the preparation of additional surplus bus vehicle.
Hot boss. Was looking for uh a uh helper Matt, which uh I think said they have the ability to evaluate. Uh.
Get the message, huh?
Our stories to ever bust.
Okay, I'll back to we too.
Back to me, see. So it's similar to the topic we just went over, uh, the line of the strike would be by just uh to make sure assets are properly inventoried, retained, um, and um, probably used without waste. So what we have is, uh, we haven't got this for a good amount of time. So we have purchased buses in the past, um. We're very good at accumulating them and storing them. So uh we have four more buses and fleet vehicles that we need. So this is really cleaning up the old buses that um are frequently just sitting around and out of service. So we're looking at uh similar to last conversation, surplus, surplusy fifteen buses. Um, so some of those are truly scraps. So they'll go with scrapyard. Some of those will deal with surplus to see if we can't get any value out of them. Uh, some of them actually, like we've done before, we use for trading, uh, for law enforcement, understand with con buses. Um, so we have fifteen buses, we have five vehicles that are out of service. So that's old aisle trucks, um, that aren't a lot of service. So I'll go through the issues, but uh so we we've uh revived some of that fleet and then we have a large, just uh lower backhoe that's uh out of date, out of service as well. So the proposal is to claim that's a surplus so that staff can go forward with uh disposing of this property. It's just a quick uh state on our current fleet. So this is what we will still have is eighty-three large buses, uh, pretty much small. Um, pre-type A's marked for scrap. Um, it would just operate fifty-six daily routes. So that's just the routes that we use. Um. We get a lot more than that. That's just the daily genet routes, which has um special service routes and all those pieces, but we just thought it was good to share with the board, uh, just what the fleet remaining that we have is. So the hopeful outcomes of this is fleet efficiency, which we should do with our vehicles. Um, also with this is we did, we were awarded a uh EV bus grant. So uh, we will have three uh EV buses in the future. Um, and part of that grant is we get three buses, but then we have to prove that we're getting ready to use. So that will take three of these buses in exchange for that. Uh, as part of that process now, we're working with the vendor and the state to uh import through contracts and all those pieces to actually get the training states and stations in the buses. So that's uh in the works. There's not a different at the timeline yet. Um, but it's it's the process. And then really like I mentioned, like key fire ships, uh, more of a law enforcement team and they appreciate the opportunity to understand how to treat, you know, what muscle look like. So if there is a situation, um, you know, they put in a training facility, you know, they train on it. So that is the proposal will be for approval in next board meeting, um, for those vehicles.
Bye. Questions?
Just out of curiosity, how long have we had those buses that we're getting rid of, like or should we have the vials or?
Yeah, there's there's a gamut from um twenty-five plus year old.
That?
Like five hundred or five hundred bus models.
Wow.
Yeah. Can't leave a few where there's a storage for seats, car seats, but yeah, um, yeah, it's that they're they're they've they're
Yes.
They've had some good.
Yes, bigger in time, you. It's like a mirror. Wow, this is a trick that's in my head. Still.
Don't keep.
Bye. And yes. Do. Bye, all right.
I will um note for the board and we'll we'll bring this up next, uh, next week. We have a national slash international award.
Yes, let's do it.
Chief, but we'll 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 give us formal recognition. I know it's time blocks.
Well, it took them long enough, fifth side. I checked way in the years, I'm very good.
Just grab.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Okay.
We'll be on.
All right, um, I remember the, oh, the sociable.
Yeah.
Okay, or probably cities.
All right, so all right.
Except this agreement or um American Rescue Plan Act, Tarifa.
Yeah, and this uh I'll just do a little break question again at presentation, but this is the project we've already been working on for the last two, three years with uh the county PSD and some private donors. So the exciting thing is um we have movement and we finalized some agreements and we're on the county commissioners, um, times friends or may twenty-third. But uh in line with strike twenty-five, just uh really it's charity partnerships and then you know, providing this some clear pathways for student opportunities. I mean, just the investment that this provides is um, it's truly exciting. Uh, so Arba, what is Arba? It's the American Rescue Plan Act. It was passed at Congress in March two thousand and ten. It was whole point nine trillion passed. Uh, that might filters from the children's department out of the state and the state filters out of the county. Then the county has different processes for uh the uh giving that money now. Um, one piece, uh, one priority that the money was looking at was for workforce development. So that's why when we initially started this, at the board recall, it was actually a much larger project. Uh. It's not, but it's still still good, uh, the good outcomes. Uh, but it was really focused on workforce development. So our process is we create a formal swill, uh, in that swill, uh, working with learning services with their team, L C T. Um, it's really gonna focus on a pathway for E N T fire police, like a first responder, expanding what uh must have started. Um, the grant funding is a million dollars from River County and not a million dollars from a private donor. I would say that private donor is gonna be publicly announced on the May twenty-third uh county commission meeting. There'll be a bigger facilities at that time. So that's why it is labeled as that. Um, and really, as I said, in the, yeah, we work with the partners at PSD. You know, our goal was to increase the pathway opportunity. Um, and really deeply collaboration with other districts. So we're good at working within ourselves, uh, and we have expanded out and working very closely with PSD to understand the cross, cross functions of how we can share the assets and pathways uh between our two facilities. So it was exciting because even that, the C T director, uh, party up at PSD and that Andy here, they really have a great tight relationship now and they're working very close. Um. So now have that uh cross function of the the different pathway sharing. So. Uh, our draft schedule is, as I mentioned, May twenty-third, uh, will be the actual kind of official, uh, um, agreement approval with like visitors. We will come funds by the end of the year and then we have to spend by twenty-six. So this is gonna go pretty quick. Um. We do have a pseudo design team kind of set up and ready to go. So when this does happen, um, we'll just kick off. On the next slide, you'll see, uh, this is a very conceptual just draft look at what T C C, we, we initially the plans, there was future kind of section we've been add to it. Obviously, the elements was done, that small section in the blue, it'll be something to that. So you know, it's a, it's a good size addition for another pathway. Uh, it's not the full extension, but another pathway, um, we'll be adding. So anyway, that's what I had, but uh it'll go forward to the kind of mission on the twenty-third and the four nights for approval. Um, yeah, and all both of your cows accounted ours, so.
Thank you, Scott. This question sound like Beloxander. No, it's not a D C.
Is this, is this the same as what was presented? I think at the mock when they were talking about the class with the P N T higher key. It was this different.
Yes, it's kind of similar. So I think that's actually a T B cost of value.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but we are working with that. That's kind of like the extension of that just.
More.
Yeah. So all chiefs, uh, um, which both fire E N T and uh police are um ready to go and they're vested, they're part of that new purchase.
So you're adding a facility with, so will PSD make that as well or are they sending students down?
Um, they're working on their plan. Yeah, it's the, there's, there will be a facility modification on that.
Yeah, you too, Mel.
Third day. Look like you. All right.
Three.
Um. Four points, they're like. I'm trying for twenty-five, five, four, me, following this. Oh. So here we go.
So you all, it's the time of year when we need to discuss next year's uh board meeting calendar for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. You all have a draft copy of that. Um, as you know, our meetings are traditionally held on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. The first Wednesday being a study session, the second one being a our regular meeting. So the only, um, there's a few things that we need to look at on October. Normally the meeting would be in October. Our study session would be Wednesday, October second. I do have it in there for what uh Tuesday, October first, as Raj Bisharan starts on a sunset of October seventh. So that would be one thing we need to consider. Um, then in December, as we usually do, what I have in there, the fourth would be our retreat or our study session at Casby. Casby this year is the fifth through the seventh of December and then our meeting might be the eighteenth. And then in March, due to spring break, that would be the third Wednesday of the month. So we have it scheduled for the twenty-sixth, like we did this year. The only thing that does is bump us. So we have a meeting the last week in March and then we have our study session the first week.
Yeah, dude.
And then, um, but that is it. Otherwise, it's the first and third, and then our two meetings are corrected, are are noted on there as well.
Anything you wanna have?
So, um, the, we, we can discuss or, um, and I, um, we've been doing our study sessions at schools and so, um, obviously we don't have any school whatsoever. So then we have a board with, um, approving the calendar. Um, and so, but once the calendar is approved, um, the board will need to direct whether or not we want to continue um, holding uh meetings at schools or otherwise. We so that will, that will lead to a good.
Once up the now, I.
Now would be a delightful time to talk about it only because I have you all here and then I don't have to wait two weeks to with.
Yeah, okay. So the box is on. Continuing what we think doing for our study sessions, how they need to solve. This what we're just wanting to equal box that we're going to.
I think it's good. I mean, the kids tonight were nervous, but they're in a familiar environment. Um, so maybe a little less nervous, you know, I think it's good for community outreach. I think it's good for the school, um, so.
Like we bring out some fun.
Well, I enjoy talking to you.
The sessions that were teachers come before me.
Yeah, I mean, those are really a good, good opportunities. Try to hear what's happening in the building. So I I hope that we can do it. Oh, and I don't know what solution is maybe, uh, it, so I do like going in the schools. But what I have found in, like, this room is great. There's, there's no, like, overwhelming HVAC noise or echo. So some of the schools, it's really it's really sometimes hard. Forget the audience. I can't even sometimes hear. You guys can't hear me or I can't hear you. I, I don't know what kind of sound options or magic you can do.
I got no magic.
Yeah, I don't match. Or maybe Tom has the magic since he's like, hold on, the fifty's.
And you just know the magic.
It's spooky, I think.
But that, that's the only, and I don't know what to do about it, but it does make it sometimes really hard to share.
I should, that is a great reason why I should be in schools, right?
Okay, we're expecting kids to work in this environment if we can't work in them. That tells us something. It's part of the experience, right? Say, I think it that many is part of us understanding that the different challenges each building has and also the benefits of each building. But or maybe not do it in the, uh, it seems like a lot of times they're in the cafeteria or the gym. So maybe like this, this ego body bearing gets much more tasty and, yeah.
Okay.
I agree. I mean, I, I agree that I think, you know, sometimes it's challenging to hear and stuff like that or, yeah. But I don't, I mean, I don't think that's a reason to stop moving. And I think the benefits far, far outweigh that. So I like, I like it.
I assume I need thoughts.
Uh, Brendan, what's the quality of the uh broadcast when it's played back?
Um, audio wise, it varies widely.
Okay.
Um, of course, obviously, you know, different older schools, all time very large, you track systems. Um, libraries are always much better, lower ceilings. Like these, like these setups are a lot nicer for me to do that. And, um, yeah, but that's really, that's really the biggest difference. It's often the cafeterias or with some best places where there's just no area to go make an HVAC works loud, but but otherwise it's, you know, I try to set up so at least we can hear like the real calls and the important things that we absolutely have to have that are essential and and have that in the system. The only, the only advantage of doing these things is for broadcasts, I can't show the presentations. And so, and so people, they can certainly go on to the website and see any of the things presented and discussed, but just in the real time of doing the presentations. That's the limitation, the capabilities of, of doing stuff out here, so.
That is one good thing about diligent, if people are on here, I, I have a live meeting going, so they can see exactly what we're doing in here. And even the presentations, they just have to be on diligent, see it, if they're gonna watch with his, it's a little different.
I think it's, um, powerful and a strong statement, one or goes out into the communities, um, one of the things that we will look at doing. Um, speak more strongly next year is just promoting the meetings at the school level, so I think the principals can certainly send out. In their bulletin, um, just to, you know, as exciting as these meetings are, um, and, and we could, uh, it's, it's helpful for coming into the community. I know the board appreciates the community we engage it with, so we will continue to, to work on that, and, um. With those presentations, we're actually students and kids and staff are presenting, that's, that's also pretty powerful, it's great, and, you know, certainly in their home sherks.
Do we have any other neighboring school districts who go, who have their study sessions?
Um, we are a great district, um, I don't, I don't know, I, I know that other districts do this, um, but I think, um. From a frequency standpoint, and we do it quite a bit, the fact that we're doing this roughly is at least great. We also, um, are trying to work on our rotation schedule so that we, um, we make sure that we're going to new schools. So next year, we'll, we'll try to get new schools in the mix, I know it's bar numbers, you appreciate getting into other buildings, some that you haven't seen. Uh, yeah, again, we've had those opportunities to engage and speak with the staff, I think that's been really poignant and gives you, uh. Just additional insight into the, you know, the experience that our staff are, so deep.
I do have one more thing, Gordon, um, I think it was Casby twenty twenty two, Amy, Leaky and I attended a session. That was hosted by the Durango Schools. And Durango is one of the districts that moves into the schools for their study sessions, and so we brought that idea back to the board. And I think it's a good idea, I'll second what Superintendent Schaefer said about, um, it makes us available. And the fact that, uh, perhaps not a lot of people come, I don't think that's nearly as important. As the fact that we're available, we try to hold the study sessions in places where. Uh, parents of that particular school community could come easily, and I would hope that we continue to do that, I think it's, um. I think it's an important part of our P R plan, and I think it's important for community involvement as well.
I saw her, the team message coming around. Yeah, forget.
Is the board also, um, with the dates and the changes, are we good with that too?
Yeah.
I mean, you don't have to tell them how you're involved, but I just wanna make sure.
Maybe only can sharing this way, but this year, very conferences, it was, was different, so, uh, kids with a district. Yeah, we can, I think we can avoid conference days. And so conferences, they're all told her. Whenever we were at Costco Valley, I would sell, that's right.
That was worse.
This more dead, okay. That's right, I didn't stand, that's right, what, that's the. So many haven't submitted, um, conference variations.
Yeah, cause usually conferences are on Thursday, Friday, but they.
Yeah.
A lot of ones was, or.
No, it went for Wednesdays now. So, okay, so play class. More than you, man, I did. Right, so well, we're in this next time. If further discussion with, with I mean. All right, thank you. For planning, um, yes, uh, measuring shot, recognize and teacher appreciation that's next week. So we will leave somebody at the next day. Read that, about confirmation. Hey. Now that, yes, and, um, four point A, here's a standard action consent items, just the personnel, contracts, over fix. That one, nations, anything else that might show up, let us say, no, that's, that's my silver is. Everybody, I need questions over, can be a different, so fire. Hey, and go still.
All right, well, I apologized for my voice between the, uh, grains that we had. Which prompted all the gloomy, which has happened, and now two days of constant wind. Those of us who have allergies are suffering, and so my goal is to get through my report without adding a coughing bit. And I will feel that my, uh, performance tonight will be, uh, quite good if I can do that, so, uh, just a little explanation. All right, so regarding my, uh, Casby L R C report that, that you have received. Um, a couple of things of note are the legislature will adjourn on May eighth, so there's only, and it's. At least one of the notes that I highlighted at the beginning, so there's just another week of the, uh, twenty twenty four session. And then, uh, the twenty twenty four Casby legislative wrap up session. Uh, is listed there on Wednesday, the twenty second from six to eight P M via Zoom. Then it's free, probably must register in advance, I'm already registered, I hope some of the rest of you will register as well. Uh, this has turned out to be quite an interesting legislative session, and as I was driving here. This afternoon, I heard something on the radio that date this, and it's been more interesting legislative session, and I'll get to that, I'm just gonna say. That's my tease or the lake show, that you're still with me, uh. Some that I wanna call particular attention to H B twenty four eleven sixty seven, uh, the one dealing with student seclusion. We've talked about that before, we've had, uh, feedback and input from Dr. Schaefer. Uh, and from our Director of Special Education, um, in regard to what we do, should we do it, et cetera. So the comment was, that was made at our session last Friday, is that student seclusion is currently outlawed. In several states, this year's bill was postponed indefinitely, which means that it was killed. Uh, but they're anticipating that another one that will be even stronger will be coming next year. And, um, yeah, Cook, who's the lobbyist for Casby, said that because. Uh, student seclusion is currently outlawed in several states, uh, yet we'll probably put pressure on the legislature to make a change of our. In our current policy. Um, another one I wanna comment on is school food program, which is H B twenty four thirteen ninety. Uh, at the last meeting, I believe I told you that, um. There was a chance that next year that high school students would not be eligible for the free meals. Uh, as of last Friday anyway, uh, the, the talk at the legislature was that. Next year anyway, uh, high school students will still be eligible for free lunch program. Following that, it's really up in the air, uh, because of the prohibitive cost of the measure. Um, H B twenty four fourteen thirty alarm bill, uh, I may have mentioned this the last section. We, we all know that the budget stabilization factor is, has disappeared at this point. But it hasn't disappeared because it's been removed, it's disappeared because it's been reduced to zero. And that's important legislature to remember, and it's important for us as school board members to remember that it could be reinstituted. Uh, reinstated at any time, so at this point, um, we're flying pretty high in regard to. The, uh, the fact that, that, that the B S F is not going to be a factor, um, this coming year. But there's no guarantee that that will continue. Uh, just a couple more, uh, what I heard on the radio. On the way in, is in regard to H B twenty four fourteen forty eight, which is the new public school finance formula. Introduced by Julie McCluskey, who is the Speaker of the House, I heard this, as I said, on the way in, Gordon, I don't know if you've heard it or not. Yet passed the House today. And, um, it is. A major rewrite of the School Finance Act, or the make, uh, School Finance Formula, of course, it does now have to go. Into the Senate, there are a number of things that, yes, will really impact, um. How money is spent is one of those, uh, her, her thinking, and the bill actually talks about more money for rural districts. More money for special education, notes, no decisions have been made. But it's probably significant for us to remember that this bill has passed the House where it resides, uh. How far will it go in the Senate, who knows, it was introduced by the Speaker of the House of Representatives, so that certainly has an advantage there. Um, a brand new bill just introduced last Friday was S B twenty four two twenty five, trauma and foreign school safety drills. Introduced by Senator Marchman. Purposes to include the study of best practices related to active shooter drills. And it was introduced in the Senate Education Committee on Monday, I didn't receive a report on what happens to that. Too big issue as a, I'll conclude my reporting with quickly to, uh, our legislative platform. Uh, property tax reform, uh, as of last Friday, no bill had been introduced, and Gordon, I don't know whether one is, no, still not.
I'm, I'm here, yeah, I hadn't, I didn't receive anything either.
They're still expecting that a bill may be introduced, something I didn't know that I thought was very interesting. Is that if a bill is enacted by the legislature, uh, affecting property tax, that will not lower the total amount of property tax revenue. That school districts are seeing due to backfilling, you'll recall that Gordon has explained backfilling to us before. That's if the bill is actually enacted, or if it's a bill, meaning that it's enacted by the legislature. If a change comes about as a result of a ballot initiative, and you probably know that ballot initiatives. Are usually instituted by, uh, private citizens, by non-tribal groups, uh, various. Uh, sources like that. If a ballot initiative is introduced and would happen to pass, that could lower the amount of property tax revenue. That every school district in Colorado receives, uh, there are several initiatives that are being considered for the November ballot. And that's why there's pressure, even though there's only a week left in the legislative session. For the legislature to enact some kind of a bill that would protect school districts. Because if one of the ballot initiatives were to pass, there's no guarantee, because the ballot initiative could basically throw out. Uh, a significant amount of property tax revenue. Finally, uh, regarding charter schools, um. There were two major initiatives, uh, or, or bills that were proposed at the legislative level this year. Both of them were postponed indefinitely, meaning that they were killed, however, there are currently three initiatives. Being considered for the November ballot that would allow the Colorado Charter School Institute. To authorize charter schools within school districts that would include no governance by the school district in which the, the charter school is located. Those bills are generating a lot of interest and concern right now, will they make it to the ballot, who knows, but, um. I'm being concerned, so that's just a little additional information over what I sent you, uh. Things are happening, uh, very fast right now, as, as the legislature, it's, is moving to adjourn.
Steve, I think, um, yeah, it's on, yeah, we have to, that can provide, um, the bill, Senator Marchman's bill regarding trauma and. Retorn, um, uh, drills and, uh, it is that, so that was still.
It was killed, and, okay, I hadn't heard that. All right, so switching gears, uh, moving very quickly to the legislative platform. Uh, information that I sent out, thank you very much for, um, digging into samples. Sending me, uh, initiatives or issues, I shouldn't say initiatives, issues that. You feel are important both from the community level and from the lo- local school district level. So as I have continued to work on this, um, I made an executive decision by myself. Because I, we had talked about maybe starting fairly simply, uh, you'll notice under the, the local school district issues. On the list that you have, I think there were like thirteen or fourteen, that didn't look to me like a simple way to start for our legislative platform. So I decided to focus on the ones that received more than one mention from the board. You'll see that behavior and discipline taught that five of us, uh, commented. And that two of us commented on, uh, student and staff mental health and accountability for student success. So I began to start working then on these, and by working on these, what I've done. Already, I actually did this on, uh, Saturday, since it was raining and I didn't really do anything else and I was coughing. So I thought, well, I'll, I'll start to work on this, so I went back into the student, or to the school district samples, I gave you three samples. And looked at comments that we made and attached those comments to these. Various issues, what I discovered was that, um, we marked a lot of things relative to funding. And accountability, and the platforms, sample platforms that we receive. Basically had no mention, um, uh, the behavior and discipline, staff retention, equity and inclusion. That staff and students that will help, so I thought, do we really want a platform that's only going to have two planks to it? Those two being accountability and funding, so at the end of our, um, Casby meeting on Friday. I asked, um, the person who was conducting the meeting if I could have a visit to make pitch to. Our board colleagues from around the state, and I, I mentioned what we were working on and that we were looking. Uh, for samples from anyone who might have, uh, included some of these different issues that. We didn't already have any, any samples for, well, school board members being what they are, I got two amazing. Platforms, uh, that same afternoon, so depending on what else we find as we move forward. Um, I think we probably are close to having enough sample information that we could actually. Create our first legislative platform, and we, of course, can add to it, we could add, add to it. Before we enact it, after we enact it, but I'm, uh, I'm optimistic, and, um. I think it will help us to move much faster than I was concerned, that we, we expect, or to, okay, that's what I have, thank.
Not work with us.
Yep.
Erase. We're ready to finish, let's. Um, yeah, that's about good, but, all right, we're coming toward the session, I don't, for a study session. The six point one is, um, that's still negotiations about the date.
President Scour, Hector Schaefer, Bill Silverstein, Human Resources Officer. So strive, this presentation will connect as strive twenty twenty five, number three, human talent to the upcoming negotiations, so I'll review. The, the brief discussion we had last week, and then we have negotiations coming up next week as well. So tonight we'll review the notes from the twenty fifth, I doubled over all the pages, but I'll go over the important things and then negotiation notes. All right, so the negotiating items, the three discussion items that we're having is compensation, uh, we didn't get into compensation at the last meeting, so that's, uh. That will be a big focus for the one last week, um, Mesa, so a related item, we have the P L C. How has the addition of elementary P L C language helped support student achievement and our professional collaboration and our plan time? And then the second related item, we have site-based decision-making plans, how do we support collaborative decision-making? So it's always a pleasure to have Gordon Jones come in and do a presentation on, uh, the environmental scan, and he did a wonderful job.
Intuition.
I'll, I'll just. Like at the pause of. It was just, yeah, I was looking for a roundout pause recording, but, uh. So we continue to work with professional hearted communities and then can continue to work with site-based decision-making, and, uh. Susan Scott, as, or, uh, Susan has done a great job facilitating, like, I really. Like I really enjoy the way she kind of brings the process out. So the reason why I say that is, uh, when, oh, when we get to that part. So, so the work that we did at the previous one, she, uh, she really got us to think about, okay, so before we go on the small groups, what, what's, what's the focus? So right before the straw designs, you know, she really talked about, okay, so what's the focus going in? Because in small groups, like we split up into two different teams. So we have sixteen members. We split up into two, two teams of eight, right? So four from each team. To, but before going in there, so what's the focus? So we talked about the intent and clarity and flexibility. And then that's just the MOU sixteen dash four dash one dash A dash six, elementary late start language impacted. And then the other one is elementary PLCs and then possibly look at minutes, not just days. So currently the wording that we had in there was days, you know, talk about the Wednesdays itself. And that restricted some of the flexibility. So if you see the first part about flexibility. So the large group really discussed that moving forward and, and kind of gave advice for the small groups. So after hours and hours and hours of discussion around PLCs, uh, deep, deep discussions around PLCs. So in red is what, because there are three different versions. So if you look at version three, there's version one, version two. So basically we worked, worked separately for an hour and a half and then go to the large group and then give, they present to us and then we give feedback and then from the feedback they go back and create another version. Then you go back to a large group, we give some more feedback, there are a lot of questions and then they go back and create another version. So version three, a hu- hundred twenty minutes each month. And this is a draft right here because it's not a ten-year agreement because we're still working on it. So a hundred twenty minutes each month of elementary PLC time will be held outside of the contracted three hundred weekly minutes of plan time to cross that on two late start Wednesdays per month. So you, so you get an idea of how that brings in flexibility. And then Wednesday late start time will be designated for PLCs through the building Wednesday's AD plan unless the building is otherwise able to schedule PLCs within the contract day. Building and or teams may choose to schedule PLC time during plan time and an equivalent amount of time in exchange for late start Wednesday's time. This must be detailed in a building's Wednesday plan time. Teams are not precluded from choosing to engage with PLC work during their plan time. So, so if you look at the contract language there, it's, it's basically, you kind of run through scenarios and see if that fits into the version. So it's a great job from the team that put that together. So larger reach consensus to eliminate sixteen dash four dash one A six. And then you can see how, you know, too late start Wednesdays per month, we cross that out because if you have the flexibility for a hundred twenty minutes, then that supersedes what the previous writing was. Okay, for site-based shared decision-making, so site-based focus, consistency around practice, compatibility, compliant with district policy, consideration of duration, all stakeholders having a voice in major decisions and guidelines, attachment, number one, MOU. So that was the driving force of the discussion when the small groups. Okay, so segmente, straw designs, so action staff for the twenty-four twenty-five school year, two plus two will organize a task force to review and make recommendations for possible revisions to MOU article six, collaborative decision-making and attachment one, collaborative decision-making guidelines for the licensed employee handbook. The person, purpose of the task force is to research internal, external collaborative decision-making plans, identify best practices in order to make recommendations regarding attachment one and or attachment six in time for negotiations. So basically the discussion was how, how are we going to put something in place for another day for discussion? So, so we thought a task force should be great because the other part of it is that the discussion was about bringing in research. Like what are other districts doing around that? We, we had looked at, you know, for example, you know, our group pulled up St. Frank to see what wording they have. And, and when you look at our attachment one, that's basically in the MOU, but it's a little more specific. So just giving that example was, was a great example of why you really want to do your research first before we put something in place. So we thought, you know, even if that went back to teams, how are teams going to do that during tense week and you kind of make corrections? So I think the task force will give an idea of, okay, so what's out there as far as research and what could we put in place? But then the second part of here, the action set, all current side-based shared decision-making plans will be reviewed by sites in the fall of twenty twenty-four to ensure conformity to state and federal laws and regulations, board policy, MOU understanding and other T S D parameters. Sites may reach out to the two plus two oversight committee for guidance. So basically, what has happened in the past is ev- everybody looks at their site-based plan and, and they have a discussion. And at times they say, everything worked well, let's continue doing the site-based plan. Right? So what we're trying to create is when you look at your site-based plan, here are the parameters that you need to use to see if anything in your plan is violating policy. So, so we had a discussion about T S D parameters, meaning, you know, the discussion we had was if the district is, is scheduling what district assessment days would be, then those are T S D parameters and a school could come in and, and overrule that and say, well, no, you have to follow a site-based plan and we have to have a discussion. So that's where we're at with discussions around that. And, and then, you know, a, a week, a week away from the wording will give us a great time to go back and revisit and say, okay, so what we intend it is matching what our attention was. So compensation will be a big focus at the next meeting, but really, uh, circling back and finalizing some ten-year agreements around, around the two ordings and the related items. So next meeting is May seventh at admin building eight four, filing straw design, discuss compensation and, and MOU thing out. Well, we have no other day scheduled, so I believe so. And then huge thanks to our superintendent who spent some time with us, Denise spent some time with us and Stu spent some time with us at, at the meet. And they saw we were like split up into different groups then, you know, they mostly spent time with the PLC group. But it's just fascinating the conversation that we've had. They can't get to this more.
They make, I consider, we invite the MOU, helping everybody else to wait the access and see what it was like. No, it's the website, but you can't take nothing.
Yeah, definitely.
That might be first wild, to somewhere that is, to find it.
We'll do that in the handbook.
Yeah, that's, all right. Any questions, Bill, on this? So, mostly about your term star.
Uh, Bill, will Susan also facilitate the task force work?
Uh, she, she would, so it's the same thing that we've done in negotiations as far as like, we create a task force. You know, same thing we did last year because PCC is basically a task force and there, there's a charge for PCC. So what negotiations does is they give guidance of what the expectation is. And the majority of the time, you know, people on negotiation would also be on the task force.
I asked because having observed Susan's facilitation skills over a number of years, she's the best of the best. And I thought if, uh, if you ran into her, say, having her there as facilitator could be a real advantage. I, I understand what you said.
And sales of wedges, please have one. So, so as I think about coming back to it, you're saying that T S D parameters being a little too loose. Right? It's like, um, knowing that one of the scenarios that we're pushing into, like there's just that such a broad umbrella that I think it's gonna, I think there are many other problems that we don't flush that out for to say what constitutes something that actually, yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to take everything else in it. I think that the filters are good, but that one just seems to be sort of a catch-all, which I know it's trying to be, but I think it's still too big. So, I think that I'm being helpful to everyone. It's just a.
And I think it's great to keep that, like, keep it up.
Well, I have a question about, so the, also with this, uh, shared decision making, it says, so they'll be create a task force and then the task force is going to be research and make, make, make statements regarding attachment one, should our article six in time for negotiations? For negotiations like on next Tuesday or negotiations, yes.
For, uh, for next Tuesday, we'll make the recommendations.
So the task force.
For, yeah. So basically what we'll do is we'll create the task force, i- is the idea. So the straw design would be putting the word together what the task force is. So then we create the criteria and, and then the collaborative decision-making. You know, the one in article one, uh, like the deep conversation we had about article one by site-based is that, that was developed like ten, fifteen years ago, like twenty years if that's continued. So what we want to really look at about the research part is, okay, so is that meeting the needs that it is right now? So, so the point that you're making too is the site-based plans, not in all of them, like the ones that we looked at that are nine to ten pages, there, there's, there's the admin input, right? Like admin decision. And then it's shared decision, like shared decision and then input decision. So the shared decision, going back to the comment about the parameters, there's some things that have grown in that plan that shouldn't be there. Like, uh, not everything should be shared, shared decision-making. So it, it's us going back and saying, okay, so let's reread our, our, our wording and see what we can do within the four hours that we're talking about that. And, and basically it goes back to negotiations. So the larger group will decide on it and then put that in place for next year.
Yeah, that was my question. Was this, is it going to happen this year or next? Next year.
Done.
We have questions, Bill. All right. Thank you, Bill. I'm gonna suggest, I don't know, I hear some. So we're gonna take about five, ten minutes to get up stretched because the next part is very pretty. So, um, the spring, saving back to the vice six, we're done. Okay, we're moving on to our next item, the discussion on, uh, to get going, of course.
You guys stand call it? Yeah, yeah, I just.
Thank you again, our president and board education, Dr. Schaefer, Tampa County Chief Operations Officer. Uh, I am joined by Ryan Wiger with Lujan Strategies and we have, I think, just two slides to review tonight, so.
Just two.
I'm starting. That's for the song and dance. Okay, so we had going, um, just in line with strike twenty-two five, this really touched there, I think, about transparency and these resources. And, uh, meet the needs of student, staff and community. Um, we'll see a lot of information tonight, uh, from the community. So our hope tonight is because there is quite a few, um, slides, you have the information is Ryan's going to go through and just, when I say briefly, briefly go through all the slides. Um, and that should take probably a half hour-ish. Uh, then we want to kind of pause. It really worked through all the questions from there because as the board recognizes, there is, um, several hundred pages worth of, uh, comments, information, data. So there was a lot of information. So, so we just want to write it at the time at the end. Um, to really spend my question and answer, uh, from there. So, um, I will let Ryan kind of take over the hammer drive and, yeah, I don't think so. So, yeah, we'll, we'll get right into it. Um, and nice to see you all. I know that when I presented to the board before the survey kicked off, there were a few missing. So nice to meet you all if we haven't met before. Uh, but yeah, let's get right into it. There on the left side of the screen there, you see an example of the text message that was sent, uh, to residents or registered voters within the district. Uh, just inviting them to take the survey and, you know, making them understand this is an important survey. We want your opinion, even if you don't have kids who attend school in the district. We know that in November, roughly seventy percent of those who end up voting don't have kids in the district. So very important to get that feedback. So using that, um, combined with the efforts of the district itself emailing parents and, and reaching out uh, in other ways, we interviewed three thousand one hundred ninety residents. Uh, so a very, that's an overwhelming response for, you know, very, very pleased with the, you know, amount of feedback and, and the amount of, uh, the number of residents who took the survey. And so it gives us a, a margin of error that's pretty low of one point seven one percent, but importantly, these results are weighted. And there's just the objectives of the survey, but I was just going to get to this slide. Uh, the results are weighted to reflect what we expect turnout to look like in November. So you see there the red box around twenty twenty, or if you have this in front of you, um, you know, you really see the differences between going into presidential year versus going in an odd year. And primarily you see the differences among the different age groups, right? So in an odd year, if you look at the eighteen to thirty-four age group, they're only about twelve percent of those who are going to vote are eighteen to thirty-four. In a residential year, it's twenty-two percent. That's a significant difference. And when you see that increased turnout, it goes from all the way from forty-five to around eighty-four thousand. So there's just a lot more interest, a lot more people voting in a presidential year, um, which, you know, has positives and negatives. When you think about whether to put something on the ballot and we can talk about that in a little bit, but just so we understand, that's how these results are weighted. And so let's get right into it. Uh, we always ask a set of benchmark questions before we get into specifics about a bond measure. And in this case, do you have a favorable, unfavorable opinion of the district? Sixty percent favorable, twenty-seven percent unfavorable. So more than a two to one, uh, ratio between favorable and unfavorable, that's where you want to be. That's a solid measurement. Uh, no, nothing to really be concerned about on that front. And for context, here is a list of just some of our past clients in the past few years. And you see Thompson there at sixty percent is, is right there in the middle. I would say those seventy-three percent are, or the seventy and above are, are kind of outliers for one reason or another. Typically, we're measuring this somewhere between the mid-fifties, the mid-sixties. And so you all are, are again, right there in the middle. We always also ask a, a follow-up question. Do you have favorable, unfavorable opinion of the teachers who work for Thompson School District? And just like we see here, we see this in, in pretty much every district. Teachers do have generally more favorable opinion than just the district in general. So sixty-seven percent favorable and only thirteen percent unfavorable. Obviously you have a lot of non-parents that twenty-one percent is primarily non-parents who say, well, I don't, I know about the district, but I don't know about teachers because I don't have a shot in school. So. A slightly different question that we're kind of really getting to the meat of, of what a school district does, obviously, do you approve or disapprove of the job the district's doing educating students? Fifty-five percent approve, twenty-nine percent disapprove, sixteen no opinion. Again, this is a very typical measurement and I'll show you here. Um, again, you have those outliers up there in the seventies, but we're often measuring this in the low sixties to mid-fifties. You see there Thompson fifty-five percent. Um, you know, comparable size districts to you all, um, or it, you know, the, the closest comparisons here are places like Westminster, which had a, a pretty low measurement with a very high unsure no opinion, uh, for whatever reason there that we did, uh, a few months ago. But then you see Adams twelve twenty-seven J, right? Kind of in that same neighborhood as those districts. Uh, slightly, you know, we kind of shifting gears to talk about finances a little bit. Do you think the district has the financial resources that you can provide students with a quality education? Forty-nine, yes, forty, no. So that's pretty split. And this is an important question. Obviously anytime you're thinking about putting anything on a ballot, because if this number's high and they think you already have the resources you need, they're going to be reluctant to support whatever the specifics are. Um, and, you know, lately we've seen a couple of districts where this has been in the sixties, which is, you know, co- kind of coming on the heels of the increase in home assessments and just increased property taxes that have happened in the last year or so. Uh, that has caused a lot of folks to say, you all should have what you need. And so the fact that this is at forty-nine and not up in the sixties, I think is, is generally positive for you all. And then do you agree, disagree with the following statement, kind of in the same vein about finances, uh, do you agree that the district is fiscal responsible and spends taxpayer money wisely? We always ask this because again, it's important to know whether there's some kind of underlying issue going on. Forty-three agree, thirty-five disagree, twenty-two no opinion. Here's the context, um, for that, we typically do see this in the forties or fifties, but what I will say is that a lot of this is determined by the size of the district. It's very hard to break fifty percent in a district the size of Thompson because people just aren't quite as familiar. So you see there Mesa County Valley fifty-one, Adams twelve twenty-seven J, at least comparable sized districts, you all are right in the same neighborhood as that. And then when you look at those higher ones, it's Lamar School District, which is obviously a much smaller school district, you know. Your admin team interacts with many people on a given day, right? But it doesn't even approach the percentage of voters that, you know, in a small district that go to an act. So people are just more familiar and maybe feel more confident in saying this in sweat districts for whatever reason. And then do you think, uh, the district is heading the right direction or do you feel it's off on the wrong track? Forty-one right direction, thirty-six wrong track, twenty-three no opinion. Obviously a high percentage of those, uh, twenty-three percent are, are non-parents. And so, you know, I, I think again, you may look at this and say, wow, I, I really wish that was over. And so, you know, I I think again, you may look at this and say, wow, I I really wish that was over fifty. Um, what I will say is that school districts unique, uh, unique to some of our other government clients that we work with. School districts have different groups that feel that the district's on the wrong track for different reasons. And so you kind of get it coming from both sides, but again, here's context for that number. Um, again, it's very difficult to be above fifty percent, because some folks think the district's falling in the wrong track for this reason. Some folks think they're going on the wrong track for a completely different reason, and it all just kind of adds up together. So you have Pueblo Seventy that we did in March of this year, that was great for them, and I I I think a lot of that was they kind of had a change in leadership and people are really feeling good down there. But you look at Boulder Valley, Adams Twelve, and then Thompson, there you are at forty-one percent. Again, just a very, very typical, uh, measurement. And what I will say, cause we're gonna get into bond stuff here in just a minute, uh, Mesa County fifty-one. In April twenty twenty-one, there you see at the bottom, only thirty-four right direction. That was the same year that they passed the successful pension in November. So don't don't look at these and think, oh, these are incredibly determinative of what's gonna happen in the in November, the details are gonna matter of of ask, so. But we didn't wanna leave it there, we wanted to say, okay, why of those forty-one percent, why is the district headed in the right direction? Um, and and the top reason is just they see students around them who are successful. Uh, the, you know, the the kids that they know in the district, they feel like are doing well. They see, uh, the quality of teaching and the staff commitment, especially those obviously who have students in schools. Uh, they appreciate the number of programs offered, um, and that's something that, you know, a lot of non-parents may not even be aware of. It's the number of programs that are offered in the district, but those who do know about them really appreciate it. And then just the level of community engagement that the district, uh, you know, provides is something that these folks mentioned positively as well. Of those thirty-six percent of the districts off on the wrong track, um, these are really the top four in in any district that you're gonna survey, it's really around the state, unless there's been some very specific uh, really, you know, negative incident that's happened within the district. But it's a lack of focus on fundamental education, the belief that, you know, the district needs to, or or, you know, that that teachers in classrooms need to have different priorities as far as what they're teaching. And then it's fina- uh, financial mismanagement, uh, by the administration. Teacher quality and staffing issues, the idea that, you know, we can't retain teachers because they're not paid enough, leading to high turnover rates, those kind of things. And then just safety discipline concerns, you know, concerns about bullying or drug use or safety and security in the schools, those kind of things. Then shifting gears a little bit, um, this is a question that we typically ask in our school district surveys. Just to kind of help you get a sense of, for the average person in the district, what makes a great school? What are the things that they think are important in terms of contributing to a great school? And, you know, really, that, you know, on this side, they're all over nineties, so let's look at the the very important, the intensity. Uh, those nineties are very somewhat important, but when you look at very important ninety percent teaching basic subjects, right? So they think if if kids are going through school and they're not learning the basics, that's a problem. Um, attracting and retaining high-quality teachers, obviously very important as well, and then a safe and secure learning environment. So you can tick those three boxes, if students are learning what they need to know, and you have good teachers and safe schools. Those are really kind of the big three that we see every time we ask this question. But then moving to on down the list, they also prioritize things like CTE and STEM classes, uh, teacher collaboration, teacher parent communication, um, you know, again, uh, technical programs, preparing them for jobs after high school, things like that. Are are also very important, but not quite at the level of those top three. And then going on down the list, uh, things like small class sizes, I mean, you see that used to be very kind of buzzwordy, obviously. It's kind of lost resonance a little bit, only fifty-seven percent say very important compared to the, you know, seventy, eighty, nineties that we saw on the last slide. But it's still up there, uh, creative classes, musical arts, job opportunities, work base, internships and things like that. Uh, welcoming environments, providing students with opportunities to learn outside the classroom. And these last two are, again, pretty much always the bottom two in any district that we ask. A modern building equipped with innovative tech, I mean, that kind of goes to, they just want to learn the basics, and some folks say, well, you don't really need a modern building to do that. Right? Some would say you do, uh, so there's, you know, disagreement there, but, um, and then team sports and athletics, very important, but not not really on that core level as those other films. So then we just wanted to have a a a statement here, letting them know, um, we haven't made a decision yet. We want to know your honest thoughts and opinions, because it's gonna help us to make that decision. And so we're considering three different ballot measures, so we're kind of setting the table here, we're gonna describe each one to you, and then you you let us know what you think. So starting with a one hundred sixty million dollar bond measure, and you'll see here, this is very thorough, right? It's explaining exactly what the what, you know, how that would break up, what how we get to that one sixty, what it would do. But also what it would cost a homeowner per one hundred thousand dollars of a home's value. So there's a lot of information here, but they need to understand that, because when you just throw out big numbers, whether it's a hundred sixty million or if you just throw out the mill number, one point nine three mils, the average person can't translate that, they don't know what that means, right? And so letting them know that the cost is about twelve ninety-four annually per hundred thousand, how would you vote knowing all that? Fifty-nine percent would vote yes, thirty-two percent would vote no, and nine percent undecided. And so that's a pretty strong measurement, a pretty good place to be. Well, you know, what I also like to see is that the largest group, if you look at the intensities right here, is thirty-five percent would definitely vote yes and approve. That's that's a really good place to start, I've, what I'll say is typically pre-election polling, we're looking for sixty percent support. Um, not like the fifty plus one that you actually need in November. Uh, because just there's gonna be other factors that are gonna just beyond your control that are gonna affect how people view this, whether it's a crowded ballot or a general economic downturn, or just things that you have absolutely no control over. So fifty-nine percent on the one hundred sixty million dollar ask is is a really strong place to start. Then we're going right into the two hundred fifty million dollar bond measure, where we're giving them the same type of information. Here's the extra things that would get you in addition to the one hundred sixty, here's what it would cost you per year or per month. And that drops to fifty-one percent, so an eight-point drop. Um, thirty-nine percent would vote no, ten percent undecided, so that's really kind of right there, pretty well split. Um, I'll I'll say that's, you know, it's it's pretty typical, when you, you know, start at a low and then you go a little bit higher, okay, it's gonna drop off a little bit. Just generally, folks will assume, okay, the low number is what they absolutely need, and then when you start going up, they don't need. I I know that's not how, you know, we thought about it, but that's just kind of unavoidable, that's what they think. Um, and then so on the three fifty, same kind of deal, exactly what you get, no surprise. Uh, it drops another eight points to forty-three percent, and actually, if plurality would vote no on this option. Um, and so just, you know, interesting to see how that, see that dynamic across the three. What I will say is that, you know, obviously on the ballot, they're not gonna have three different options and pick brackets, so. Uh, you have to pick one. So what we did wanna ask them is, oh, and and so there you see just on on one slide, just the difference between. What's interesting is undecided pretty much stays the same regardless of what your ask is, um, but you see just kind of the drop off in support there. But what's interesting then is that we asked them, if you had the opportunity to vote on just one, which would it be? And you see the the largest group is twenty-five percent does not want to vote on any of these. And so those are folks that you can assume they're voting no in November, if they don't even wanna have an option. But then you look at the next three groups, and actually, the highest is option three. So it's it's tempting to see that and say, oh, man, I should go with option three, cause it's the highest. You know, I I think what this shows is that those option three voters, they're not just gonna vote for option three, they're gonna vote for option two or option one as well. Right? So you ha- you have to kind of add those up together, and what's interesting is twenty-two plus nineteen plus eighteen. That pretty much gets you to your option one that we saw a couple slides ago. So all the option three, all the people who want option three are also voting for two or one, it's not like they're gonna be upset, oh, they they didn't put the big number on there, I can't vote for this. So ju- it's just an interesting kind of dynamic to see there where there is, you know, that twenty-two percent are clearly folks that really wanna get behind this and they want the big ask, um, it doesn't mean you should necessarily go that route. But it shows that the interest is there for at least those twenty-two percent of folks. And then the next kind of part of the survey is we're just sharing information about the district and why this ballot measure is important, or why it's being considered. Um, and we'll kind of go through these in order of how likely they are to to cause folks to be more likely to approve a ballot measure. The the thing that tested the best, that was most likely to move them, was talking about career pathways at TCC. Uh, this is something that really resonates a lot, and I think what also explains why it causes the most movement is because many folks aren't aware of it, especially if they don't have shit in school. So they read this and say, oh, wow, you're actually doing, you know, those five pathways, and if we do this, it would mean more students have access to those? That sounds great, that's that's a really big selling point. Um, next on the list, currently fifty percent of school buildings don't have air conditioning, letting them know that. Some may be aware of that, some probably aren't, they just know that their kid's school doesn't have air conditioning, I don't know, but that moves folks as well. And then safety and security needs is always, you know, gonna be something that people view as important, whether they have kids in school or not. Everyone wants schools to be safe. So those were both at sixty-three percent or likely to approve after learning it. Sixty-one percent are more likely to approve after learning they'd be audited quarterly by citizen oversight committee, so that's that's an important kind of piece to have, uh, to any bond measure, which I'm I'm sure you alls are well aware of. Um, and then going on down the list, generally, the general rule of thumb is that if it's over sixty, that's kind of like a home run message, like that should be part of what you're talking about, and as we get beneath sixty, it's not that it can't be talked about, but it's just generally less effective. So kind of getting into the weeds about maintenance needs and priority needs and medium priority needs and things like this doesn't quite move the needle quite so much, um, for whatever that's worth. But again, just still kind of important to have that out there, I mean, to me, to have the two hundred ninety-four million dollar number out there shows, you know, we're not trying to get all this done at once, like we're trying to, you know, be thoughtful about what we're doing. Um, letting them know the educational enhancements would not be limited to CTE for high school, like it's gonna benefit students everywhere around the district, that causes fifty-seven percent, uh, to be more likely to approve. And then this one, you know, I I know some of the district are probably disappointed with this one to only be at fifty-four percent, you know, you you wish you could like go out and tell this story, like, yeah, we were great with, you know, the, uh, uh, investment and what we did with twenty eighteen bond. What what this is to me is that's kind of insight based all, right, like some people really appreciate that, but it's the average person's not gonna say, oh, wow, no, I never thought about that, it doesn't move them quite as much as you are, as you are. Um, again, fifty-four percent more likely to approve when we talk about Berthet. Now, this one completely makes sense because Berthet is a relatively small part of the district. You know, sixty percent of the district, for example, is in Loveland, right? And so you tell people Loveland, if I've frozen Berthet, they're gonna say, well, doesn't really sound like my problem, unfortunately. Uh, but still, you're talking about over fifty percent of people, once they hear this, and they, oh, yeah, I didn't know it was that bad in Berthet, maybe I am more likely to think that is. And then this one, we don't really expect to move the numbers really at all, but it's just to get a sense of, especially if they don't have kids in school. And we're talking about a district that has fifteen thousand students across sixteen elementary schools, three PK curates, one middle schools, and five high schools. I mean, I I bet you'd be surprised how many voters in the district don't know that there's five high schools. Uh, they 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 probably couldn't name them off the top of their head, right? So they certainly couldn't name more than a few elementary schools probably, so just again, trying to educate them about that. So after going through all of those, all that information, we wanted to ask, again, as a reminder, here's the three different options. Tell us what you think, hundred sixty million, this is all the exact same information that we've given them before. And what's interesting is it actually drops to fifty-seven percent. So it's tempting to see that and say, well, we shouldn't talk about anything, every time we talk, it causes, that's not, that's not what I brought. But what I'll say is that this is, actually, we've been seeing this more and more with bond measures, where when they learn more about it, even though it's, if they they like a lot of information, sometimes folks will have something that they grab onto from the information, say, well, I I don't like that. Maybe it's the population growth in Berthet, and they say, well, that, I think they should have thought about that before. I, you know, it's hard to really speculate, but what happens is, you know, and and part of it too is we're starting at a relatively high number to begin with, at fifty-nine. And so it just kind of drops off a little bit because they learn more, and I'll show you, basically what happened is, um, we're moving, we're losing some from yes, but we're also moving some from the no into undecided, so it's kind of a wash a little bit. Undecided's moving up by four points, and so maybe you get those two percent back, cause you move up from undecided, it it's more or less kind of the same. Um, same kind of dynamic on the two hundred fifty million, fifty percent would be, uh, would vote yes, thirty-six would vote no. And if you remember, that was at fifty-one before, so again, got a huge movement there. We are moving more from the no into undecided, so that's at least positive there. Um, and then on the three fifty, it the the support doesn't move at all from forty-one. And and there's kind of a movement there as well, so there's the slide that just kind of shows again, them all up next to each other. What's interesting too is that, yeah, we moved undecided, we we've kind of built up that undecided number. Some of it's from the yes, unfortunately, but some of it's from the no, but it's roughly the same, no matter which option you're talking about. And I I have to imagine that that undecided is kind of the same folks that are undecided on everything, they're just like, give me more information, and then I'll make a decision. Um, and then, so you see fifty-seven on the one sixty, fifty percent on the two fifty, and forty-one on the three fifty. And then we just asked them an open-ended verbatim question at the end, do you have any final thoughts? Um, and here are the top three themes, you have the folks that are just, you know, even if, even though they may qualify by saying, yeah, I I don't like the tax increase, uh, they recognize the need to continue to invest in these schools, especially things like air conditioning maintenance. So they're gonna support it if they think it'll benefit students and it'll benefit the schools. That's the case that has to be made for them, which obviously isn't a hard case to make, so that's good. Um, obviously, you also have folks that are just generally concerned about any further tax increases. And here's where you get folks saying, well, you should do other things, you should either relocate spending, or you should figure out another way to do this. Um, because we really don't feel comfortable with property tax increases right now. Um, and then there were also a number of comments that just highlighted the importance of investing in teachers. Uh, because at this point in the survey, we had not introduced the idea of a mill levy override, and so what happened here is a lot of folks think, well, what about teachers? I don't see anything in here about paying teachers more. Well, I've got good news for you, right? As soon as we asked them that, we also asked the mill levy override question, just generally, we didn't have really numbers to put behind this. And so this is just a general, if a modest tax increase was on the ballot sometime in the future, would you vote yes and approve it, or vote no, or reject it? And this is at sixty-one percent approve, and only twenty-seven percent, uh, would vote no and reject, twelve percent are undecided. And again, you see that thirty-nine percent definitely yes and approve, um, I think this is clearly something that there's a significant number of people would like to see. Um, and honestly, I think that this kind of plays a part in why those higher bond measures don't test as well either. Because they think, let's go for a smaller bond, but let's also focus on an MLO. That's just, you know, personally my opinion from going through all the comments and everything. Um, then we also wanted to ask, because we have a demographic question, asking them to self-identify where they ask, and this is three hundred nineteen respondents within Berthet. We wanted to ask, um, after reading about each of these options for the new schools, cause if you remember, the ballot measures just said either or. It didn't, it didn't say which of these was was, uh, gonna happen. Option one would be a remodel in addition to Ivy Berthet Al and Turner Middle School. And option two would be a new middle school and in addition to Turner. And this is really kind of a mixed bag, right, thirty-four percent would support option one, thirty-nine would support option two, and twenty-seven percent don't have an opinion, obviously, a lot of those are non-parents, I would just say, mine doesn't really matter to me. Uh, so to me, you know, like, I don't know if you're hoping for a clear answer there, but unfortunately, we didn't get one, it's it's pretty muddied there, so. And then just getting into, these are just the demographics, uh, that we have of, again, how this, how the data was weighted, where we could weight it. Uh, but just in general, you know, we're talking to, we're asking about the, and that that should say youngest student. Uh, mostly, most of the youngest students are in K to fifth, which makes sense, seventy percent are in neighborhood public schools, so we do have fourteen percent responding to our charter schools. Uh, demographics about gender, party affiliation, age range, uh, race and ethnicity, things like that. We have a pretty good, uh, that's a honestly a better spread than we typically see, uh, among income. I'm glad to see that we, you know, got a wide range of of incomes there, um, rep versus on, and then you see the location. And that is weighted because we know, just based on who voted in twenty twenty, roughly sixty percent of the vote in November is gonna come from Loveland. Ten percent's gonna come from Berthet, eight percent for Collins, and on down the list. So with that, I know that was a lot to throw at you in a short period of time, but we'll just open up to the questions. So with that, I know that was a lot to throw at you in a short period of time, but we'll just open up to the questions.
Regarding having the election in the presidential election year. What's been your experience? For example, Colorado isn't going to elect a governor or senator, right? So the only uh big election is the presidential election. Does that make a difference in the turnout when people know we're not electing a governor or we're not electing senators?
Sure, yeah, so you're right. Typically, what drives turnout is the top of the ticket. Um, and you know, to try to think of a nice word for this presidential election, we'll say unprecedented. Right? And so, um, you know, remains to be seen whether people will just be disaffected and not actually turn out. Because they.
Right.
Yeah, that that we already have. And they don't have a governor or senator, right? Right, but typically, typically presidential elections, like. There's no scenario where it won't be the highest of of the four years, right? So even though we're voting for midterm or we're voting for governors in midterm elections, presidential elections are always gonna be higher.
Okay.
Um, and so in terms of just overall turnout, you're gonna get more folks to vote. Uh, because of what's at the top of the ticket in a presidential election and there's just so much noise and. You know, congressional races and it it all just kind of adds up to, well, if I'm ever gonna vote, I should vote this year. That's unfortunately what most people, that's how they view it.
Yeah.
You know, you wish they would vote, you know, like any chance they got, unfortunately, that that's not all comes out, so.
I have another question, would you or would would you rather go around and then come back?
Just go ahead and then we're gonna vote this way.
All right, um, do you know whether there are gonna be any other financial measures on the ballot? Uh, obviously, we don't go about property tax and there there could be a property tax initiative. Is there anything that you know about, either from the state of Colorado or Laver County?
Well.
Will be on the ballot.
So statewide, um, there could be any number of things. Right, and you know, there's everything from a property tax cap to, you know. What if, to me, it's kind of a fool's yarn to try to predict exactly what the ballot's gonna look like. But it would just generally, I can tell you it's gonna be crowded. Um, you know, the the county is at least considering them some things, I know, um, just from doing some polling for them. No official determination of putting something on the ballot or not, but I just think in general, um. This is going to be a very crowded ballot. There's gonna be a lot, even even questions that aren't, you know, specifically tax questions. There's just gonna be a lot out there that folks are gonna have to get through and that is something that, you know, we just unfortunately have to contend with. And, you know, when doing campaigns in the past, what we've done is like vote from the bottom of your ballot.
Yeah.
Right? Like make sure, I don't care if you vote for anything else, but vote for three A or whatever the, whatever, three A and three B, whatever the top. So it just, it it's, it just speaks to the importance of cutting through all that noise and making sure that, hey, someone's gonna get their ballot. They're gonna say, what am I, yeah, the distance way too long. Um, but you know, that that that's happened a couple of times in odd years as well. So it's kind of, it's kind of unavoidable. Uh, we we don't have any control over what's gonna be coming down from the state level or the county level or what have you.
Sure, and then Todd, a a clarification perhaps. I think the slide said that fifty percent of the buildings are not air conditioned. Isn't it fifty percent of the classrooms that are not air conditioned within the district?
It's about the building. So we didn't include, um, for example, it is like Edmondson has the library. You know, but the rest of the building it's not, so we included a partial for and non.
Okay.
So the partial tool or I'm sure the partial and non or in that fifty percent.
Okay, yeah, sorry, thanks.
The biggest question, I mean, there may have more, but the Stu asked it about uh the presidential. Alexander.
So looking at like you sort of placed us where we are in comparison to other districts that various measures. Has those other districts done have bonded mill? I mean, I know some of them are more recent, so we wouldn't know, but have they had campaigns and have they been successful or like have?
So, yeah, so I mentioned, I mentioned Mesa fifty-one.
Yeah.
It was kind of that, you know, the bottom on the right track run gration direction. Um, and they had actually, basically what they did is they went to the ballot and failed. And then they call us and said, Nate, can you help us figure it out while we failed, what we should do next? So basically what they did is they is they kind of, I mean, honestly, what they did is they did the work that we're trying to accomplish in the survey. We're trying to right size it and get the right ask for voters. Um, so they did that, you know, in in their cert, that very sixth survey that we asked that question. It was ultimately successful in November, even though they were a low and at a low point in terms of their right direction, wrong track. So it's certainly not determinative, just because someone doesn't think you're, you know, on the right direction. You know, someone might think you're not on the right direction because you haven't passed anything and they want you to pass something, right? So it really kind of comes from both ways. Some some folks say, yeah, they're on the wrong track and I'll never vote for anything that's on the ballot. Those folks are gonna be out there in any district. Um, but yeah, like some of these are more recent, uh, like a couple of them, we just did this past couple of months, so can't speak to them. Um, you know, a lot of the, like I said about these numbers, I've been determined if a lot of what determines their success or not. Is whether there is kind of a robust campaign that's educating folks about the, you know, whatever the ask is on the ballot. Typically, what we see is that when, you know, results in November end up being dramatically different from what we measured in the survey, it's due to one of two things. One is just there was no campaign activity, no one was educated about it, no one knew anything about it. Or two, because they ended up putting something on the ballot that was so dramatically different from what we actually asked about in the survey. That it kind of just made the survey results irrelevant because we, they just went a different direction. So does that kind of answer your question?
It does, yeah. I mean, I think it's, and obviously it's hard to predict, you know, what people will ultimately.
Right.
You doubt, but and then it also makes me think about like reading through some of the comments, a lot of comments talked about like. The schools going in the wrong direction because the schools are rundown and falling apart. That's like, well, exactly because we.
Yeah.
You know, some like, I don't, I mean, I don't know what you, I mean, I guess that's probably part of the like education.
Yeah.
I guess my question is like, what are we, what's the first, right? I mean, we know we have to now do something with it. So I'm curious to know what, what we doing. It's like a lot of hopeful information and now we need to take action.
Yes, I can speak, uh, we'll go a lot to that, um. So how only do we have this? You know, we've been doing a community meetings, student inputs, um. You know, director meetings with that T S D, camera meetings to get input. So our next steps are Monday night, we're having a meeting with M B C, so we're taking all this information. Have a similar slideshow or the two slides, so about fifty slides to go through the comments. Uh, just so that we can understand, um, all comments ranging from, um, everything just general bond comments. To specifics around safety or educational enhancement or option one, option two. Uh, and then also what Steph's looking at is we know where one sixty is, we know where two fifty is. You know, we also know the C T is important and A C is important. So the challenge is if we go, you know, with one sixty, we have the board looks to that direction, it doesn't itch those two. Uh, two fifty is a stretch too, so do we leave somewhere in the middle and say, okay? If we do around the two hundred-ish, this will talk about M B C, this is a general goal yet, so we'll scratch the itch for the maintenance, the growth rate. But then also we could do some A C and then also some T P, so it's trying to find the right, like I'm saying, the right mixture to also. The number, but then the right attributes to support the number that we saw in the, within the uh survey. So that I say the the next step on is to all the information of M B C, um. We'll absorb that Monday night and then within that next month, we'll kind of define the more in the exact scope. Um, look with, look at review of M P C one more time. You know, when I say exact, you know, Monday, we're looking at pictures. When we say meaningful priorities, what does that mean? Let me see, our priority goes that way. Uh, then we're going to, we'll go to the first part of June, yeah, with M B C again and say, okay. Here we found everything down, you know, here's all the comments, here's the pieces that would be included. Uh, if we come to board and say it's round two hundred, this is what it would look like, so. You know, here is at this school, here's how much educational enhancement at this school, this is all safety. So really, the fine man, the next step would be like, assist by school. To say, okay, at Edmondson, for example, uh, your educational instruments is gonna be X dollar amount, safety's gonna be X, maintenance will be X. Obviously, when we look at Berthod, there'll be a growth piece, there'll be down there, so we'll then find two to more detail list or June to present to the board. Late June to say, okay, here's a, here's what the recommendations look like for August, so. Okay, I took this for tonight to through the next month and the steps we're taking to. One, make sure we honor all the comments and the time we spend out in the community and the voices are all recorded. Uh, two, and then the strategic part is to hit the magic spot, get the board a list to, you know, how to move forward.
The other thing that's been uh very illuminating and helpful, so we've done, I'll see staff forums at every single building in the district. We've done theater meetings and there is starting to be, um, like an intersectionality or coalescing of the types of questions. That are being asked again and again, which now develop games. And so these now become the the information that I think our community needs or wants to know. Before making an informed decision. And so as we have the same types of questions being asked over and over again. That now creates a little bit of a roadmap for us, is we educated, um, so.
These time, so you look at a hundred and nine and so dollars and you have. And I just grasp it randomly, they superate. And the voter actually helped to think there has with them some sort of risk management or something that led to, none of this was seen that. It's been an opportunity, I mean, it's part of what we can't think that stayed on. Like, are we able to tell that story of how this got as sad as it did? And now it's got you, is, I would just, like, let's steal a monkey out of the cookie jar. And you know, you know, she's doing their own right way or whatever the case is. It's just such a big number.
Well, none of us have cookie jars here, so that's, that's a good thing. Um, you know, really, it's it's some, it's a multiple of things that add up. Uh, you know, you just look at the district in general since two thousand, this is the second time we've done this. You know, so you look at the frequency of requests for ask, um, you know, that plays into it. Candidly, for the part that plays the most into it is our working general fund doesn't allow these opportunities. So it just allows for, and that's what we shared in the theater meetings, it allows for the general operation, you know, one day to day. And we can fix this light, we can fix that, we can repair that, but it doesn't allow for, you know, large infrastructure change and updates. Nor when you look at growth, it doesn't allow for growth. Something especially you get too is around development. Well, there's thousands of homes, there you go, how many for developers? Though it's really nice, like, you know, it's a small portion, like small, small. For example, you know, if we get a thousand dollars a home, what we get a billion dollars out of a thousand dollars, a thousand homes, that's not gonna build a school, that's not gonna help. Maintain anything. Um, so school funding is, I would say, the major piece. The frequency in which the district goes, you know, it plays a joke, but you can keep up, you know, it's unfortunately school bonds, the ways schools are funded to prepare these. That helps you stay above, you know, above average, um. In, you know, without going backwards and understanding why this didn't happen in the past, um, those are, I would say, the major pieces of why we're here. Um, but we have the the thing to focus on and look forward to is the success we're coming off of. You know, we've now got momentum and we're starting to, you know, turn a little bit, um, but it takes time, you know, it's not a, it's not a shift that you can turn. Even four or five years, it takes decades to, you know, kind of get to this point where you're starting to live well.
The other um story to share with our community is that our yearly budget, um, funds for today. It doesn't fund for yesterday, it doesn't fund for tomorrow, and so when we receive our state funding. Um, it doesn't account for the need to build a new school. It doesn't account for a boiler breaking or roofs leaking, it funds for our needs right now. And so with the averages of our buildings, forty to fifty years old, just like a home, it falls into disrepair. And we can take care of our assets the best we can, but when we are funded, we don't, we don't have extra. We can't like, click a little bit of our budget and put it away. I mean, we do save some in what's called reserves, but the reserve. Wouldn't fuck building a new school, a reserve would, it would take care of an emergency, emergent need, it doesn't take care of large scale needs. And if you look at the two biggest features of this bond with nearly two hundred and ninety-four million dollars just going for maintenance. That's because we have older buildings. And when you look at seventy plus million dollars going for a new school, we have growth, we need a new school. So it's a budget that we receive every year, great budget and we'll spend every penny on it, but it won't cover really those other needs.
Yeah, and I'll just add, just real quick, I mean, we've done fifty school bond surveys the last couple of years. There's not a single one that doesn't include a significant deferred maintenance component. So it's just kind of the way that school districts have to operate, like to your point. Good, you you're right, I mean, there are a lot of voters that say, well, I've fled money away in case something happens to my roof, why aren't you? Well, believe me, we would if we could, right, so it's, 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 it's tricky. Um, but it's, you know, that that's why you have to kind of tell the story and, believe me, getting into, totally into the weeds about school finance is not the answer. I'm getting to the weeds. So, sorry, Gordon. But it's more, you know, it's it's being excited about, here's all the, you know, here's the great things we can do. It's not, well, let's have a forty-five minute conversation about how public schools are funded.
So there's the right things we should know and the last time we asked you bring and put more in then.
Right, that's a good start as well, and yeah, that's that's a big part of it too, is being able to say, like, promises made, promises kept. Last time we went to you, here's what we did, here's all the great stuff we did, so that's definitely part of the story.
Yeah, it's all those that, it's in, this was included in the survey, you know, it tells us all how to tell the story. Uh, you know, focus on C T, focus on air conditioning, you know, this stuff through our things, so it's not about. Oh, for us, we haven't had or we aren't being able to do, it's, you know, we're doing the things and we need to make good doing these things, you know, because of what you see here.
Makes it, um, so I know that, you know, in this district, you know, we did a bond in two thousand five. I don't remember what D N L was, it was a hundred.
Sorry.
Um, and then twenty eighteen and then this one, which most likely would be one sixty. And so in a twenty year span, that would get a total of three, I think. Just again, just trying to imagine how a lot of guns will like, you know, that's over four hundred million in twenty years. But they don't put in perspective, that's that's really not due by year, it's not a whole lot. Um, so then my other focus is, when I look at these questions that were asked. How big, how big does it play in or factor when I'm just gonna call the tilt? So on the approval of the district job, the favorable, the favorable opinion was seventeen percent strongly. Thirty-eight somewhat, fiscally responsible, fourteen percents, you know. Strongly said, yeah, and twenty-nine were like, yeah, somewhat, so there's, what worries me is that roof of somewhat. And it also seemed almost a little bit dual personality in that they're saying. Yeah, you guys need more money and. But we don't think you're fiscally responsible with the money we give you, it it just stained, uh, to me. And then when I read all of the questions, the people who support the district, they're they were there. They were like, I don't know, they just aren't motivated to like write out a lot of answers, the people who, they were motivated. I mean, I looked at it was a hundred and fifty-six pages to sixty-two pages, there's some, there's some motivation there.
Yes.
Um, and so that, that concerns me, especially, I know that Berthod is part of the whole district. But for better or for worse, people are like, why is this money going to Berthod? And my school, you know, it's, we can't do things, it's almost in retrospect, maybe we should always like spread it out a little bit each time. So I don't know how we overcome that, especially if Berthod's only ten percent of the district. And so my wonder to you, and I don't know if you've seen other districts do this. So with that new special levy that does allow a district to create a savings. Or, um, capital remodel, big improvements, and there's no, it's pretty big. And both Gordon and I have looked at the statute, any maintenance? And both Gordon and I have looked at the statute, any maintenance, technical, technology upgrade, new technology. That sort of stuff should be used for that, which then allows money in the general fund to go for raises and for staff. Is there a way to present that in a winning way that says, look, we get it, there's this new tool. Since twenty sixteen, it works new, we weren't aware of it, now we are. We wanna do right by what's needed now. And start doing right for the future to show that we are gonna manage and keep this deferred maintenance down. I- is that a doable argument and have you seen other districts do this?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a little bit in the weeds to kind of talk.
Well, I mean, I'm, I would never tell to the moment.
Sure, sure. Um, but you know, you, and that is the problem is this relatively new. Right, this, this idea that you can't have the special levy that you can kind of set setting stuff aside, so. I certainly think that that's a worthy piece of, you know, explaining, okay, here's the plan for the future is what we're gonna start doing so that we don't have. You know, in the next twenty years, we may not have to have three different bond measures, maybe only two, to your point about the historical, you know, twenty, two thousand five, two thousand eighteen. And now, um, you know, the, the other things, I would say, it's, it's very typical, right? So the, the no voters do, they're always more talkative than the yes voters. And you know, as, as a school district, that's something you just kind of have to deal with. And like, you read through the yes voters and a lot of them are like, although yes, but. I don't like this, or although yes, but I don't like this. And that's a problem, right? So they are kind of, they're qualifying their yes. Uh, but what's encouraging is that, you know, there were a couple slides where the definitely yes was the highest. Um, and we don't often see that, and I, I think I pointed it out a couple times where we did have it, where the definitely yes vote is, is strong, it's up there. Um, but without question, I mean, so the no voters on this were more, you know, descriptive than the reasons why they don't know. But that's very typical across pretty much any, any school district work that we do.
Do you think it will sway the voters if they weren't in that, as far as just the standard mill levy override? Or at the cap and that the special levy one is the, is really the, the, the only tool that we have?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's part of the story. I mean, I think what's important is just to say, you know, cause you have those three categories that you can spend the special mill on. Um, what's important is to say, here's what we're gonna do because, you know, here's what we can do with some more general fund money because we can do. Because we can do this. As if you just lay me the, hey, we're doing these three, then you say, well.
No.
What, what does that mean? What, what are you gonna do with the rest of it? You know, is it teacher salaries? What is it? Right? And so that is an important, you know, but, you know, at some point you do just kind of have to have a conversation, like, look, we're, we're at the max. This is what we've decided to do and explaining, you know, I mean, for a lot of voters, you have, here's the difference between a mill levy and a bond. Like, you gotta start there, cause they see the huge number on the bond, they think, oh, I can't, hundreds, two hundred, two hundred fifty million, why can't we do? They gotta know that it's not all, like, you do have to do both of them in order to get everything you want to. So you just have to start even at that level with a lot of voters. Um, but yeah, it's certainly part of the conversation is, here's what we're gonna do. Where you, you know, where the, the, the idea of the special, of the special levy is going to appeal to folks if you can get them to understand it.
That they're trying to be financially responsible and staying and planning.
Yeah.
To re- reduce that defer.
Right. And, you know, we've, uh, sorry, we've looked at, at the about language recently of how that was addressed and that also is gonna hurt. So, because it is no indifference, you know, we pulled out other about languages to see how that's written, to help kind of tell that story. So that, that's, that's a piece to look at. And the other, um, pushing that about, you know, Berthold again, this much compared to the rest of the district. Yeah, as we've been talking, it's, it's about, uh, the effort that has needs. But the focus really is when you look at, um, the details of what all the other schools are getting and the equity that we're pushing into like our older schools. Um, you know, that's again the story that we need to tell. It's, it's, yeah, there is a need on that, but that's not like the headline. Yeah, the headline is we're impacting students across the district and, you know, I keep mentioning that, you said another line, but. You know, the space that they need is now there's, there's dollars there for that because of this. So that's, you know, some of the just messaging. Uh, those have got to keep it in front of us when we're talking about, you know, the needs in general from Berthold compared to where else it's not. I mean, it's not compared, it's just this is what we're doing throughout, so we're all, we're all.
Yeah, we're all to you.
What did you say? We passed the twenty eighteen bond that they featured that was Riverview, which is in Johnstown. Johnstown is a very small percent, yet it was on. All communities, you know, still pass it. And so, um, Berthold is part of our district, um, and there is a need there. But, um, the bond at any level, at all three levels and in between will, will touch all aspects of the district.
Right, you for, you know, for any bond campaign, the danger is people picking winners and losers. Right, and I think you all have a better story to tell than some of our past clients. I mean, sometimes it's unavoidable. These people are, these, these are winners down here and these are losers. You, you all don't really have that dynamic. Like, I think it's an easy enough story to tell that, to say, here's how everyone in the district's gonna benefit. Whether you have kids or not, no matter where you live, here's what's gonna happen. And it's not gonna be that much of a stretch for someone to say, okay, I can see how that would benefit my local area. Whether they were Loveling or Johnstown or Fort Collins or Berthold or wherever.
Um, let me ask, and if you see, I mean, what do they see and what will they have in mind? Will they see all of the stuff that we booked at, or will? You be supporting, you structure it now?
No, I mean, from the start, I just did, cause I see that, um, you know, they've got kind of the insight tracker already of all the needs, all the pieces, so. It's really a summary of the last year and a half plus worth of work to say, here's the needs, you know, you've looked at before, um. And remember even last NBC with the board, when I, NBC presented the board, you know, they talked about the needs and here's the general need. We, you know, at that point it was around two hundred million, but they're saying here's our need. Uh, you know, so all the information has been out there and it's, it's posted. Monday's really about like a summary. Of the entire, all the work, just, okay, here's all the needs, here's the comments, you know, here's the data from the survey, so that, that'll be included. And, um, you know, here is some thoughts, recommendations, so, you know, the ultimate goal then is to work NBC and say, okay, here is, here is the direction. Um, you know, that's from all this information that we see, that we recommend, you know. And it's a, you know, I'm just doing the doctor, but it's, it's a very, um, invested group, you know, it's, there, there's. There's a few people on it and, um, from all over, you know, that are chairs from Berthold and there's. Anyway, it, it really covers the entire district and different demographics, different areas, so it's a good representation of like all of T S D, not. Also just one portion, and it's a good, good capture though.
So what, I mean, see.
So next is we'll have that, um, so we'll, we really got to next month to, um, to meet the work. So what we, that we see, one day we'll get those comments, you know, we have a, between our leadership here just, you know, within us. We have a bond advisory committee that meets every other week. So we'll take that information from NBC, really define that down. To come up with an offer recommendation. In that recommendation, I will include, here's our schools, you know, here's what the, what the pros would be. And here's an overall dollar amount, you know, for a bond and a special mail.
So when does the campaign, the story that we're gonna tell start getting developed and he does that? And is that part of the people that you've been working with?
So we wanna, we wanna be mindful that we do not want to get out in front of the board.
Right.
So the board has tasked us with gathering lots and lots of information, data, research, we've been spending for a year. Um, gathering, so everything that you see before you, my NPC, the forums, the notes, all of that we are then we're gathering. So, um, what we won't do is get out in front of the board. So once, so, uh, recommendation will be made to the board in Jiki. Um, but you will not vote on it, we will not ask you to vote on it until August. In June, however, we'll ask for a sort of preliminary, additional preliminary directions from the board so we know how to proceed. Um, obviously, there's been a lot of time and effort in, in this initiative and as we want to, we're, we're, we're keeping the board informed and updated. Uh, but we, so to, to answer your question, not until the board votes in August will there be a quote unquote campaign. And then just, just for full transparency, once the board, um, authorizes. Um, then the district can do nothing but inform. So we can't promote a bond or mill after. If the, if the, um, if the board says, yep, we're gonna move forward with the bond initiative and a special levy. And then at that point, the, the, the school district cannot promote it in any way. We can educate, we can answer questions, we can send out information. At that point, there would be a citizens', um, uh, initiative to help support.
So we're gonna vote, obviously, in August. Can it be teed up in June or do we have to wait, teed up in August and then we have to wait till later in August to vote?
We, we would recommend, so in June, we will provide you with a recommendation and then we'll give you July to sleep on it. And then, um, in August, we'll tee it up at a working session and then we will ask for a vote at the second meeting in August. Provided that's the current trajectory we're on, at any point of the work, so you know what, we're done. Um, but, but that, that's our current plan.
I guess, yeah, my question is anything else? God fucking anybody's night, I understand your question.
So Todd, in, in, in all of these other like community sessions and groups and so on and so forth. Do you find that the information people are talking about and you're getting from those sort of aligns with this from the general? Or are they like totally different or how, how do they compare to each other?
You know, I say as we, as this week's spending, like, involving all the information, you have the different groups, it's pretty consistent. I mean, there's nothing. There's not one group that's, you know, over here and then we saw this really here. Um, all the comments, questions are very consistent between groups, uh. Even when, you know, when we talk about options in Berthold, you know, we played all those out, you know, in different meetings and those, all those comments were consistent, uh. The students here, you know, we laid out the student lines and they were all pretty consistent, you know. Besides, I'm always letting you know that the hot dogs and heated toilet seats.
Very grounded, you know, isn't word, yeah.
Now, even the students were pretty consistent in what they feel, so there wasn't that concern of, oh, this, there's a miss. You know, impression or feeling in this group goes all pretty.
You feel like the parents that have been to your funds, no, not the parents, the people that've been at your forms are parents or are these the people like me?
Yeah, I would say it's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, no, for that, I don't, I don't see it in my score right now. So, yeah.
I mean, community members, yes, I would say it's a mix.
Alright, other gosh. Alright, so I, what I'm hearing, I mean, it's laid out in here and I feel like we still. It's still another thing we need to spend time on that is separate probably what we're gonna do, the storytelling. Um, because I'm caring that there is a list we thought, people do not wanna know everything. And people also need to know things that they don't know because this is complex. And so there's a, you know, it's a way that we wanna. To share this information that's gonna be the most helpful. Um, and this is helpful for us to have an idea of what that looks like. And even still, I think what's some of the aha that I have is like, you know, we talk about this a lot. And so what we, what like, where we thought things were, because of all the things that we have on our radar. Is different from what the average person who probably doesn't watch our board meetings thinks we need, right? And that's really important right now. Um, and so, you know, I think that, that's the other aha for me. Is that there were things on here that were more informative to the community than I would have ever guessed they were. And other things that they rated lower that I thought were really high, again, we're insiders. And so it makes sense to me that some of that's true. And, um, the storytelling, I think, is gonna be a big piece of theirs. To go along with why we picked what we picked for what, what is impacting. Um, and I do think that. One of the things that raised about this conversation for me is that equity is still throughout that. And that people care about what's in it for me. And what's in it for me may not have anything to do with the school, there might be, how much am I gonna pay, right? And why does it matter, right? And so part of our story is that we are helping our whole community and we're gonna be able to tell how we're helping our whole community. In a way that is a little bit more abstract for people who don't have a connection, right? And then also, we did make a big fight about honing in on investing in every school. Right? And I think we did some great storytelling around that, that those signs have been down for about a year now, so if you saw them a year ago. And six months from now, people completely forgot they ever existed, right? So we have to be bringing that back as well, especially since some of the feedback we've gotten is that people are very focused on what this is the thing. And then why would I care about something that I don't know I need to care about? And then, so I would just hear that piece is like a real challenge in front of us that I feel like part of what we've talked about. This is really informative, I'm, I know we've talked about it and still have worked it too. Right? And like, some of that feels like a little bit of going back to the drawing board, but with great information on it too.
Yeah, it is, but, you know, the encouraging, I say we're excited, part of we have data to help us write the playbook. So it's not like we're sitting here from scratch wondering, you know, we have the data to help us understand what our communication fan looks like and what that story is. So it's insistent, you know, it's thoughtful and informative and not too complex. Sometimes a complexity within what we do, um, creates issue within itself.
We also have, uh, many in our community that while they may not have current students in our school district. They're still connected to the district because they themselves, uh, uh, were graduates or they sent their students through. And they have a soft spot for the district, um, and so those, there are stories there. One of the features that Mike Housman does is we like to illuminate. Uh, those alums that have moved on and have been very successful in their careers and, and those are powerful stories. And those are, they're all products of T S D. And, um, you know, so families, um, you know, there, there are, there are points of pride. Are, you know, telling the story, you know, of, of our district and really, um, illuminating the good and, and the things that we have done and continue to do. I think those, those are winners. Um, so those are the, those are, you know, project things from a deficit model or, you know. Um, does not resonate as much as these are the great things, um, we have done and will continue to do.
Right, and people also need to, they'll understand that the need, right? So like, that's that sweet spot we're talking about, cause you can't, you gotta need it. And also not need it too much. It's okay.
Okay, anything else? Question, V X.
Before, uh, uh, does, we're gonna continue, I think, again, you know, as I said, there's about a, a, like, month before we make any formal recommendations. Is there, we wanna be mindful of any additional information that the board may be seeking, obviously, what have NBC recommendations? Is there more that we can, as staff can do? I wanna say staff, Todd, in this very time, um, can do to help, um, to help you.
I would like to see what you're finally like the compilation as the comments, but we, I mean, all your community groups, you sounds like you should go to the chat.
But, yeah, we'll issue that Monday, we'll issue that, we see, oh, just shoot the board.
Yeah, I'm doubting, yeah, I, I was, um, cause I don't wanna like Gordon out of there, I think he needs homework. I just wanna capture that. On the, on this special levy, I think it would be helpful for us to understand. Gordon, if you could take the statue, should we actually have a phone message? But then go through the general fund and like this kind of here and say, if this special levy was already in place. These are the dollars from these areas that we could have paid for out of the special levy instead of the general. Which would have meant X amount of dollars with some more teachers, parents. I think if the voters need that kind of stuff, I know it would help us have that visual, that hard. Data right in front of us so we can understand it, um, and see like, okay, that does make sense, the barn closed this, or you know.
Sure, I, if I may, I'll check. Uh, I, that's certainly worthwhile information, but most of that information is already done. But the ones that come, since I've heard tonight, it sounded like I am sixteen somatic, I've done it. That, that worked, I've already done analysis, indeed, I didn't terminally a bit, I wanted to find out.
Right.
Obviously, but, um, that's a very reasonable.
Okay, thank you. He's ready, Alex.
I have future topic.
Oh, well, let's see, we're done with this.
Okay.
Anything you want to add?
Mom had a lettuce and a future topics. I thought maybe we had loose future topics.
Okay, um, for tenish, I feel like you're satisfied with where we are on our zone report. I need an invitation, I kinda ready, you want, alright? So, um, the next item real quick, wait, is just future topic items to the board. Thank you.
You ready?
Sure.
So I've, uh, actually wrote this out because I wanted to make sure that I did everything that I think is important. If in a few weeks, based on survey results, additional study, we vote to authorize a bond issue election in November, it's important that we've considered all the factors. This election would be the most impactful election regarding Berthet schools for more than forty years. The last Berthet school to be built after voters approved the bond issue was Berthet High in nineteen eighty-one. Because a seventy-five million dollar price tag has been attached to both options currently being considered. We need to study both options carefully and whether that seventy-five million is a seventy-five million, a hundred and sixty million or to fifty million or somewhere in between, it's a significant portion. For this reason, before we choose the option to be on the ballot, I ask that we devote time in one or more study sessions to a thorough discussion of both options. The Magellan survey questions focused as they should have on dollars and cents. What voters and M P C haven't heard and we haven't discussed yet are the advantages and disadvantages of each option. Little to no mention has been made yet of the education-related advantages of each option as they relate to academic achievement and student performance at the elementary level. Also, what hasn't been discussed yet is the impact of elementary school size on school climate, sense of belonging, student-teacher relationships, and educational needs of lower-income students. That research is already available. The voters expect us to do our homework as board members and district administrators and to choose the best option. Seventy-five million dollars is a lot of money. We need to be sure we've explored all aspects of both options before we make a choice. The voters deserve that and they expect that. That's my, that's my response for information.
Okay, I got it down there.
Though I, there are no such thing else that this has. It gives us sort of similar to that, so when we talked about the, again, it's the occasions of, it's when things are back to us. It feels like, um, that going into the home stretch, we're gonna need some time to concentrate. So that's one big, it's on the, of the package. But I think there are several other big pieces that we, we gotta know what we can say, what we can't say, when we can say it, when we can't say it. And, and I think that, um, that I think we might need some dedicated time to do some of that work too.
Okay.
Um, cause I know I'm, I'm, I need to know and he hates to do, his best. I don't know, is that Kathy up there as a little asterisk? But, um, I think there's definitely pieces of this that we need to have time with as a group since we have a, oh, we feel like a piece of it.
So since, since I have, we have the board, we just, cause we have functionally one more study session remaining. We have, um, you know, we have our May fifteenth board meeting and then we have a study session in June and then we have our June, you know. Um, what we have, what we, so I agree completely with Sue. And I also feel like before, you know, there's gonna be recommendations and proposals and and talking about it at the dais for ten minutes is not gonna do it, it's too diligent. Um, and and as we can see, if these types of meetings getting into better, deeper discussions are helpful. I would propose at our June study session that we, we devote, other than the items we have to tee up for retrieval in June, which is not that many, um, I would recommend spending the entire June study session then unpacking and really talking through this. Um, I will tell you the other topic that we had planned for the June study session was student behavior disappointment.
Oh.
Now, I, but what I can also tell you is we can, we can push that to the fall, cause we're currently working on that right now. And there's, there's information we wanna share, but in terms of time sensitivity, I'm, I'm great doing that in August of a study session as well, or September. By then we'll have more, we'll have the data, we'll have the year in review, like, I won't have the year in review for you in June. I will have the year in review for you in my eyes, under, but, so I'm just trying to gauge the, the board's interest, cause that was the we, those are the two big topics, right? As we, as we sort of run out of, um, saves.
Like, but what about, because we have the budget we have to vote on and so we will hear also get something presented to us.
You'll get an update on the fifteenth.
And then we'll have the study session and then we vote on it. I mean, I, we haven't seen a full budget. And so the budget deserves some time in a study session as well.
Yes, I would be willing to have an additional study session in June. I think the issue that I talked about, the budget, what Darm was referring to, um, you know, we used, we used to have three meetings a month and I'm not suggesting we always, uh, have three meetings a month. But I think we may be in a special situation right now. And I think that, um, we need to allocate as much time as possible to a thorough discussion of these various topics. So, that's what I think.
The other piece I wonder is, um, we usually have a retreat over the summer, it's like some scope. But I don't know if there's got any thoughts around when or how that would be.
The, the two most timely topics that I can't push to the summer retreat would be, um, budgets. Um, as well as I think, um, direction on bond, I mean, so, um, because, yeah, so, um, I, I am supportive of Sue's request or if we wanna create two, two study sessions, cause I do feel like both are, they both deserve.
You're talking about a special meeting.
It'd be a session, yeah.
I don't think so, call it a session, dude. Thank you. Can you start starting stuff?
Would you, do, do that?
I'm with you.
I can, I'll, I could ask literally to poll the board and so we'll send like a, a dual poll to, to throw some dates. We already have one on the calendar, that's our, our existing, uh, you know, study session. And then if the board of the men of all, we can look at adding a second study session, um.
And also, yeah, yes, for getting, like, going down to two meetings, the only meeting once in a whole year.
Yeah.
Extra, that's pretty good.
You guys heard what I said, this is a special situation. I'm not suggesting we go back to three meetings a month, but I can think this is a special situation.
All right, and if the, oh, sorry. Sure, I got nothing else, I think, I'll return on meeting. Okay?
That's great.